Sorry, I got distracted. Okay, thank you. We have John Cutler, OPM for the security project, present this evening to discuss the general contractor agreement for the security project. John, please go right ahead.
Thanks, Alicia, and thank you all for... I don't know what just happened to your screen, but I am the screen like 15 times over. Thank you all for moving us up. I know you have a busy agenda, so I will try to make this very quick. Are you all seeing my screen?
Not yet.
Yes.
Not yet.
We just see you by a lot.
And many of you.
Okay, all right, me too. Well, I'll get started and hopefully this pops up. So we received six general bidders for the security upgrades project. The low bidder was J.J. Cardosi at 4.7 million. This was well below our budget, which was great, and it was great to see so much responsiveness. The bids were very close together, which is also a good sign. And ultimately, tonight, we come with a recommendation from the municipal building committee to accept J.J. Cardosi as our general contractor for this project.
Dr. Cabral, Lauren, do you want to tell us a little bit about the project?
Yes, this is the security project for the schools in the district not to include Blanche Ames. It is going to really get the infrastructure up to date and make sure that we are really state-of-the-art everywhere. We have work going on beginning this summer. Schools will see some construction happening. And the municipal building committee has been following along in the process of the entire bidding that has happened to date. And on Monday evening, Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday evening?
20th.
The 20th. They voted to recommend that the school committee, as the granting authority, vote to accept J.J. Cardosi as the general contractor for the project. So they have also vetted it completely in addition to the owner's project manager. Lauren, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Danny, do you want to add anything? Does anyone have any questions for either Dr. Cabral or Mr. Cutler?
So are we, so we are comfortable that the selected J.J. Cardosi is meeting all the criteria we have in terms of the provider, and all of that vetting was done by the municipal building committee?
It was done... John, do you want to answer?
Yeah, so my team went through the bids. So this was a Chapter 149 bid. It is low bid, it is not qualifications-based. That said, I'm familiar with J.J. Cardosi. They're very experienced in public work. They did meet, all six of these bidders met their statutory requirements, which is just acknowledging the addendums, update statements, signing the bid. So we vetted out all these bids. And just on a personal note, I am familiar with J.J. Cardosi. They're experienced, they know public work, they know schools, so I'm very comfortable with them.
No, we have any information. Can you put that chart back up, do you mind?
On my screen, it says it is still up. So let me try stopping it and starting again and see if that includes.
I think it might just be the... there we go.
You seeing it?
Yep.
Okay.
So are there any other slides that we need to review?
No, so I just provided some backup, but I knew you guys were on a time crunch. So we, the week prior, on May 7th, we received filed subbidders. For seven trades, we received 26 bids on those filed subbidders. They were metal windows, acoustical tile, resilient flooring, painting, fire protection, HVAC, and electrical. We got over three bidders for every single trade, which is also a very good sign. And then, if you just want to see, J.J. Cardosi ended up selecting effectively the low bidder for all the filed subs, but in 149, the GC does technically have the right to select who they want under the filed subbidders, who were approved. So they ended up going forward with themselves as the metal window provider, Chevy Yott as the acoustical provider, Capital for resilient, Celtic for painting, Rustic Fire Protection for fire protection, General Mechanical and Suburban Electrical for electrical. So they carry all of these bidders, all these filed subs that came out to 2.4. So their general requirement's around 2.3 million, which I would say is consistent with this project. That's a consistent split in terms of filed versus non-filled work.
Okay, this was actually, sorry.
No, go ahead.
This was actually the slide that I wanted you to show, but I didn't want it...
No, that's fine. I was trying to...
...but, so all of these contractors you are comfortable, you have experience with or no?
I'm familiar with most of them. I have experience with some of them. I've seen General Mechanical, Capital, and Chevy Yott all on previous projects I've done. But on previous prequalifications or bids, I've seen pretty much all of these subs at some point or another. They all have good experience in public work. I think this is a good bunch we have here.
Okay.
And what is the timeframe that this is expected to be completed?
So their contractual timeline is through December 2026. Realistically, I would anticipate they're going to try to be out of Easton by the end of the summer in 2026. That's just my gut feeling, but our contract is through December 2026.
And Dr. Cabral, you said they're starting this summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll try to start work. We are kind of up against the summer window as it is. So I'm not sure how much work will get done, but maybe some rough in, maybe they'll get some items released. It'll all depend on material lead times, but I'm sure they'll dive right into it.
And municipal building committee has reviewed all of this?
Yeah, they received, I sent them a package with all the bids the day after we received them, after my company had vetted them. They were comfortable with the bids.
Okay, that's good. Just for anyone else that's watching, we have two members of the school committee on municipal building committee, but municipal building committee also has experts on there from the community. So they really, they really can dive into this, and they know what questions to ask, and they know what to look for. So I trust their advice on this.
I have a general project question, just because I think we haven't talked about it in a little while as a committee. Is work happening while students are in school?
So what they're trying to do is get in what they call summer slams, to try to do most of the work when they're not in school. But there may be some work that is done while students are in school.
And the individuals who would be working on the building while students are in school, would they be quarried?
Of course.
Yes, that is in their contract. Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the general contract agreement for the security project with J.J. Cardosi?
So moved, pursue.
Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? All right, thank you so much for coming and keeping it short, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank all of you, appreciate it.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is an executive session. So I'm going to make a motion to enter executive session to return to open session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, for the purpose of conducting strategy and preparation for collective bargaining with the EEA, Unit A. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second? All right, roll call vote, we'll start down there.
Great, pursue, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Hamilton, yes.
Great, okay.
Thrown off by the roll call for executive sessions, not my name.
So we will be back.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. We are back. I am going to make a motion to move item 14, personnel changes, retirements in the district up to the next item on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Persio, second.
All in favor? Great.
Dr. Cabral.
You've waited long enough.
Thank you. So we do have a series of retirements this evening. The first is... Actually, I don't know if you have them in particular order. Do you mind if I do in the order of those present?
Sure. Go for it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So, Kristin Foot. Mrs. Kristin Foot. Kristin is second grade teacher at Blanche Ames. She will be leaving at the end of June at the conclusion of the school year. After 19 years in the Easton Public Schools, she began her career at Parkview, transferred in 2008 to Center School, and of course now is at Blanche Ames. I began working with Kristin as a curriculum leader when I was assistant superintendent, curriculum leader, and just is an exemplar of being very involved. We've had, she's had plenty of college students in her room, has been a cooperating practitioner, has truly, not only has had a lasting impact on many children, but on many more that she's not even aware of because of the future educators that she has trained that are going to be working with those kids. So Kristin has a letter that you can read, and it's always very difficult to see these really experienced, energetic, young, healthy people like the ones here this evening who are leaving for a myriad of reasons, and we wish Kristin and her beautiful family well.
I love this letter. "I am writing to inform the Easton Public Schools of my intent to retire on June 30, 2025. This is a bittersweet decision for me. I have put my heart and soul into this job in Easton for the last 19 years. I have been on countless committees, a curriculum leader since its inception, done untold amounts of PD, stepped up during COVID home time, and too many other things to mention. I will miss my colleagues immensely and the friendships I have made over the years while in Easton. I am grateful for the support of administration, colleagues, and friends over the years while in Easton. I have learned so much teaching second grade. I smile when I think of all the lives of children that I have touched over the years. While Mr. Foot does not smile at the amount of money I have spent in my classroom, I know deep down I made an immense difference in the lives of so many children. I loved coming to work each day, each and every day, even when it was hard. I do not know yet what the future holds for me. I look forward to seeing what happens in the next chapter of my life. I chose a very early retirement to make way for new teachers to come up and change the world. Education is changing. My hope for the future is that change happens for the betterment of everyone, including teachers. Many changes need to happen, and I wish only the best success for all of my colleagues and friends while they navigate teaching in the future. Thank you so much for all the support that Eastern Public Schools has shown me over the years. I will hold all these fond memories in my heart. With warm regards, Kristin Foot." Anyone want to say anything? Yes?
Can I start before school committee goes?
Yes.
I think, so I'm dating myself by saying, if you look up teacher in encyclopedia, in the encyclopedia, there would be a picture of Kristin Foot there. She just is an absolute model of what teaching is and what a good teacher exemplifies. And I have had the pleasure of working with her. You know, as I took the role of assistant superintendent, I took on the curriculum leadership team that Lisha had started, and just the experience that Kristin brings to the table just was so wonderful and just changing to everyone. And not only does she help future teachers, but she helps her colleagues so much as well. And you have been so instrumental, Kristin, in helping so many and being a leader in your building. You'll be truly missed. She's also a champion of STEAM. I remember those giant letters that you had in Center School and that we brought to Bridgewater State University to share with colleagues out in other districts, and she has been just such a leader in everything that she does. I just quickly have to point out, your wardrobe will be greatly missed. She has, she has a T-shirt, a necklace, yes, an outfit for every occasion that she teaches. There we go. Okay, that's awesome. I will miss seeing your wardrobe, but thank you from the bottom of our hearts in all that you've done for us. You will be greatly missed. I'm so jealous of your future endeavors, but, but thank you for all that you've done.
Anyone else?
I will go. You had one of my kiddos. So, so I knew you way back when you had a little one at the, and were starting out, and you had a challenging classroom, and you really navigated it well. And I, I just appreciate all the energy and everything you've brought to the district and to the kids. I'm excited for you to bring all that energy to your next endeavor, and I appreciate the hard decision that you made for us. I really do. And for the teachers that got to stick around, appreciate that. I appreciate it too. So, thank you. I know it's a hard thing when you love your job, so thank you.
I just want to thank you for all your years of service here. I mean, so many families have been just touched by how well you have taught their children and treated their children and really, you know, nurtured their children. So, thank you. So, I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Kristin Foot with regret.
So moved, Persio.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Regretfully, yes. Thank you.
You'll love retirement.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. We have to say it for Nancy. You will love retirement, future, early retirement, as it might be. That'll last for quite a while. It came from a teacher. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Thank you.
Yeah, so will we. So, thank you.
Our goal is to make it through this entire portion without running, so we're trying. Thank you.
Okay, so next is Joan Horn. Joan is first grade teacher at Blanche Ames. Again, will be effective at the end of this school year after the completion of 30 years in the Easton Public Schools. Joan began her career as a substitute back in 1995. She was hired as a part-time teacher, .6, at Parkview in 1996, and in 1997 she was transferred to Center School, full-time as a grade first, grade one teacher, excuse me. She also has been a mentor for many years. Survived also the move to Blanche Ames, and being in her classroom is also quite a joy when you talk about someone who is kind, nurturing. Both of these ladies, I look at them and I think of the commercial, "Never let them see you sweat," and now I'm dating myself probably, because just such calming forces in the midst of what can be chaotic littles, always things under control, happy kids, happy parents, happy superintendent. And a lot of, a lot of experience is walking out the door, and I will treasure the memories of working with both of these remarkable people for always. And just remember that your, your impact lives on. You going first? And I hope you remember that, especially when we have our senior parade through the schools and you see all those little towers big, and it's always fun to watch, especially when they see the elementary teachers, because those six-foot-four men turn into first graders. They just melt when they see them and run up and hug them. It's, it's just amazing and wonderful, and it shows that the impact lasts forever. So, thank you very much for all that you've done. I know you do.
Dear Dr. Cabral, after much consideration and mixed emotions, I am retiring from Eastern Public Schools following the last day of school in June 2025. This was a most difficult decision, as teaching has been both a privilege and a joy. I have enjoyed my 29 years serving Eastern as an educator. I am grateful for the support of the leaders, friendships, and extensive education that Eastern has provided for me. Many children have passed through my classroom, a few have stayed connected with me, and I have witnessed many successful achievements now and in their futures. Teaching young children is challenging and rewarding. I am at this time not sure of what my future as a retired teacher will hold for me. I do know that I will find my way through with family, friends, and fond memories. Thank you again for your support and thoughtful guidance of Eastern Public Schools. Warm regards, Joan." Anyone?
Chrissy.
We'll just go to Chrissy first.
So now when I have my encyclopedia of passion and dedication, it's Joan. I mean, there is, I would put Joan up against anyone to be more dedicated to their profession, and Joan has been, she loves her job more than anything, and, and it shows. I love walking by her room, and she sees me walking by, and she's like, "Chrissy, come in, come in, come in," and she's always welcoming, always wants to show off what the kids are doing. So proud of every single thing her kids accomplish, and she just exudes that pride as, as she's, as you are in the room with her. And she just loves those kids so, so much. Joan, you.
And they love her.
And they love her. Oh, gosh, do they love her. You will be so missed. And, well, I'm not going to say missed because you're going to be around. You're going to sub. Yeah, yeah, okay. We're, we're, yeah. But, but you are, your, your love for the children, your dedication is contagious, and we have so many dedicated employees here in Eastern, and you rise to the top. So, thank you for all you have done, and we will miss you.
It was my privilege. I never said, I can't wait to tell them. I never said those words.
I'll go first.
Go.
So I can't speak from, I'm going to cry. I can't speak from personal experience, and, because my son wasn't in your class, but, you know, ever, you're saying how much you love your job. Dr. Cabral said the impact you've had on littles. Mrs. Pruitt said the same thing, and I'm just watching the impact that you've had on your colleagues. And it's, it's just beautiful to see, and you've made such an impact on this community. It's very clear, both of you.
You okay?
Yes, I will be okay. I, I keep just thinking about like.
That's okay.
No, I want to say, you made a sacrifice. It's obvious from all of your faces that it's a sacrifice, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I can't imagine teaching the grade you teach. I can't imagine teaching any grade, but it really takes a special person to work with the littles and really just show them the way in school and teach them to love school and to want to be there and to feel like school is home for them. So, thank you. All right, I will take a motion to, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, sure. I just want to say thank you both. I was caught a little off guard with the first one, so I'm sorry. Thank you both for all your years of service. I did not have either of you as a teacher, but for what it's worth, I still do remember my first and second grade teachers, pretty much all of my teachers until it becomes seven or eight people a day. But the impact you have had on the people, I'm sure, is immeasurable, and the community appreciates it, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Okay, I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Joan Horn with, with regret. Do I have a second? Or do I take, have a motion first?
So moved, Persio.
Any second? All in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome to say the things you'd like as well.
Next?
We, I, yeah. Please come back. Please sub.
And they both give good hugs. I just, personally, I just want to say that as well.
Please continue to spread your love and wisdom with our kids whenever you have such a willingness to come back. We always need help.
Okay, so I believe Judy Canty is online also? Okay. All right, Judy. Judy Canty currently is Special Education Secretary in Central Administration. She will also be retired effective June 27. She began her career in Eastern as a school secretary at what was once Eastern Junior High School. She later became the secretary of the middle school in 2007, principal secretary. She transferred to Central Office as administrative assistant to the Director of Human Resources first, and then to the Special Education Office as Special Education Secretary. Judy also worked for FEET for many years, raising funds for mini-grants for the schools, and was their executive assistant from 1999 to 2008. She is leaving us after a total of 26 years, including her time working for FEET. And she, I also worked with her in her capacity as a shop steward for SPIA, the Southeastern Unit for Secretary Clerical, Food Service, and Custodians. And I have to say, it was, it was a great pleasure. We had a great working relationship and were able to negotiate many successful contracts together, and it was always a pleasure working with her. Now, of course, when I started working here, she was in the office, front of the office at Eastern Middle School, that welcoming face. She then moved her office. She's just been kind of all over the place and was sort of begrudgingly left EMS, the middle school. That was a bittersweet move for her because she was beloved. She loved the job. She loved working with Luke, but this opportunity came up, and she's been amazing at it. For somebody to, you know, make a move just a few years from retirement and literally learn an entirely new job, and then decide, "I think I can be helpful in the Special Education Department," and then learn another entirely new job, it, it's really a testament to her work ethic. She is a kind, warm, friendly person, resonates with everyone, and is just going to leave a huge gaping hole in central admin and in the Special Education Department, I'm sure, as well, with Director Davidson. They have a, a very interesting dynamic between them. It's like a teasing sort of, yeah, it's really funny. They're both really good sports and have a great sense of humor, and I know she's going to be dearly missed.
Dear Dr. Cabral, I am writing to formally announce my retirement from my position as Special Services Secretary with the Eastern Public School District effective June 27, 2025. After 18-plus years of service, with 15 of these years as secretary at the Eastern Middle School, I have decided that it is time to step into the next chapter of my life. It has been a privilege to be part of supporting students, staff, and administration. I have held many roles over these 18-plus years, not only in my secretarial roles, but also as a parent volunteer with the various school PAC organizations and working for the Foundation for Excellence in Education in Eastern FEET. I am grateful for the experiences, friendships, and professional growth I have gained throughout my time with Eastern Public School District. I will always value the role I played in supporting the school community. Thank you for your leadership and support during my tenure. I retire with many fond memories and appreciation for the time I have spent with the Eastern Public Schools. Sincerely, Judith Canty.
Okay, Chrissy.
So, I was so excited when Judy came to Central Office. I had such great capacity, such a great relationship working with her when she was at EMS. When she came to Central, I just got to know her more personally. She is just such a fun-loving person, and she just has, she just wants to help everybody with everything all the time. She also makes the best dip.
I was going to say.
Oh, my goodness. Her dip is amazing, and she will make a secret batch for me and like, you know. So, but, but I will greatly miss her. I'll stay in touch with her, but she is, she's, it's a big hole, losing, losing Judy. She's just, I hope she gets to spend more time in Aruba, that's for sure.
Okay, I have something to say. So Judy, I hope you are watching because I will miss seeing your smiling face. I started working with her when we had negotiations at EMS 10 years ago. So she was always so very welcoming and made sure we had everything we needed and came in and greeted us and chatted and just such a lovely person to be around. You will definitely be missed and I just want to thank you for all of your support for our administrators, our teachers, our students, our parents. You're just lovely to be around, so thank you. Okay. So I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Judy Canty with regret.
Second, or so moved.
Do I have a second?
Persio, second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, no less important whatsoever, but unfortunately unable to join us this evening. We have a few more.
Yep, okay.
Cindy Arnold. Cindy Arnold is a Grade Two teacher at Blanche Ames. She has worked a total of 20 years in the Eastern Public Schools, starting as a substitute and a full-time teacher shortly after. She's taught kindergarten and first grade and second grade. She was at Moreau Hall, had a very interesting room in the building. They were all kind of weird, but this one was weird. But made it just as warm and welcoming as every other space in that very odd building. And phenomenal teacher, phenomenal person. Again, really enjoyed being in her room. It's, I always call it the perk of the job is being able to be in classrooms and sit with kids and just take in all that the teachers are doing. They're working their magic every day. So Cindy, again, is someone who will truly be missed and we thank her very much for her incredible service.
Dear Dr. Cabral, it is with mixed emotions that I made the decision to offer my resignation under the terms of the 2024-2025 Incentive Program. Additionally, I made the decision to retire as of July 28th, 2025. I will miss all the joys of teaching in the supportive Eastern community. It has been my privilege and pleasure to guide my students' learning. I experienced the great joy of witnessing students' understanding of something we experienced together in our classroom. I feel so fortunate to have taught in the learning communities at Moreau Hall and Blanche Ames. I am grateful for the guidance and support provided by the leadership and my colleagues and for the families and students with whom I worked. I thank Eastern Public Schools for your support and wish the Eastern School Community continued success in the years ahead. Sincerely, Cindy Arnold. Chrissy? So, well, I get to know the elementary because I'm in the building and I get to know them so well, but I was going to say that when I was sub-principal for Mr. Higgins in Moreau Hall, for some days I was able to spend time in Cindy's classroom and I was going to mention the awkwardness of her classroom too, but while the shape and all of that and the file cabinets as walls was one thing, what she did in there was just magic. And, you know, she always was looking, she's always looking for ways to make sure that she is accommodating every child in the class for whatever their needs might be. And I was able to be in there and help her with some of that, which was great. Again, we're losing such amazing, talented teachers, but I'm so excited for the next chapters in your life for you and I wish Cindy all the best. Anyone else? So I didn't work with Cindy. I didn't, my son didn't have her, but I just want to thank her for her years of service for putting up with those crazy classrooms at Moreau Hall. Seriously, did you ever see those classrooms, like bookshelves for walls? Yeah, I mean crazy. So thank you for all of that and we wish you the best in retirement. So I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Cindy Arnold.
So move to Ms.
Do I have a second?
Hamilton, second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, moving right along.
Marvel has her hand raised.
Oh.
Oh, Marvel.
Catch. How did you see that?
Hi, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something about Ms. Arnold, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, I had her for kindergarten as a kindergarten teacher and I was lucky enough to have her again and be her first first grade class in Moreau and I really, like, I truly couldn't have asked for any better teacher. She was, I think she was genuinely my inspiration, you know, for Kiriaf, like, and, sorry. She just really inspired me to learn and just, I really, really will miss her.
Thank you.
That's beautiful, Marvel, thank you.
Thank you, Marvel.
She was lucky to have you too.
Yep.
Okay, Tim Harrington. Tim Harrington is a Grade Three teacher at Richardson Olmsted. He is completing his 34th year in the Eastern Public Schools. He came to EPS in 1991, again, as a sub and a long-term special education aide. Tim continued to sub in the district through 1992 and in 1993 he became a first grade teacher at Parkview. In 1994, he was transferred to Grade Three. He's still there today. He's been a math curriculum leader and I worked with him in that capacity, which was awesome. A few months ago, I was in his classroom and he just stopped everything and said, oh, you have to see what the kids are doing and showed exactly what was happening. He was so proud of what they were doing and I was so proud of him and the kids. And we've done a couple of other things together. We worked at a food bank together. We've just done some fun activities together, just showing the dedication that the staff has, not just inside the classroom, but outside the classroom as well, serving the community, serving kids and their families. And again, a really painful thing to see, Tim leave, but very excited for him and his future. It's well deserved.
Dear Dr. Cabral and School Committee members, I am writing to notify you that I will be retiring in June at the close of the 2024-2025 school year. Having grown up in Easton and graduated from OA, I was ecstatic to be hired as a full-time teacher by the Eastern Public Schools way back in 1993. Since then, I have been quite happy teaching at both Parkview and RO and it will definitely feel odd not waking up each morning and heading to my classroom. Over the years, I have had the opportunity to meet, work with and have fun with many great kids and I will miss meeting a new batch at the start of each new school year. I have also been extremely lucky to have worked with so many fantastic colleagues, many of whom have become lifelong friends. The places that you spend your time at and the people that you meet along the way really do help shape one's life. As I move on to new places, faces and experiences, I am hopeful that I will continue to have the good fortune that brought me to the Eastern Public Schools so many years ago. With much appreciation, Tim Harrington. It was a nice letter.
It was an awesome letter.
Go ahead. Tim, I can't even say enough good things about Tim. We were, pre-COVID, we presented at a conference in China together and just being able to travel and share that experience with him, even today, when I hear kids in his classroom, I say, did you hear about his trip to China? And they say, of course we did. And, you know, he's still presenting about it. And also just to see, you know, I did work also in the capacity of curriculum leader with him. Well, I was, whatever, he's a curriculum leader. And just the way he leads with such compassion and empathy and also just his dedication and just pure love of the profession is just such a joy to see. And the staff, his students love him, the staff love him. Like, everybody loves Mr. Harrington and he will be greatly missed and I will miss him dearly. Anyone else? Okay, so I just have one Mr. Harrington story. My son didn't have him, but I was on a third grade field trip. Unfortunately, I had to ride the school bus and Mr. Harrington was on there and he was standing up there and he was keeping that bus quiet, people in their seats. He had control of the bus and I, as a parent, sitting in the bus, I really appreciated that. So thank you, Mr. Harrington. Okay, so I will take a motion to accept the retirement with regret of Mr. Harrington. Anyone want to make a motion?
So move to Ms.
Do I have a second?
Persio, second.
All in favor? Good night, ladies.
Good night and thank you.
Can I also say something about Mr. Harrington?
Marvel, go ahead, Marvel.
Sorry, so I also had Mr. Harrington, actually one of the most remarkable teachers one could have. On multiple occasions, I remember he would like take time out of his day and like help each individual student. I remember he made me sit down one time during, I think it was recess, he made me sit down during recess and make sure that my cursive was like actually legible. And then there were a couple of times where he'd make sure that like my capital S was bigger than my little s and the same for my Ks. And I think, you know, I thank him for my handwriting now. And honestly, like, I'll never forget his behavior book either. I can proudly say that Marvel never got written down in the behavior book. I still have my little prize somewhere to this day, so I truly, he was just one of the best teachers ever.
Thank you, Marvel. Onward.
That behavior book will live on and in.
Okay. Russ Manino. Russ Manino is the Maintenance Supervisor at Richardson Olmsted School. I think he wins the award this evening at 37 years. He was hired to work at the middle school when it was on Lincoln Street or the junior high and transferred to Richardson Olmsted where he remains today. Russ is not only phenomenal at his job, takes great pride in what he does. The school is beautiful, as you all know. He's also very kind. Seems quiet, but when you get to know him, not so much. Very thoughtful. He loves to recognize birthdays and I get a beautiful card and candy from him every year. He's just so sweet and will definitely miss working with him, meeting with him, seeing him in the school, having him there regularly, just such a constant force at Richardson Olmsted. Richardson Olmsted's been through a lot of iterations, even in the decade that I've been here with moves and the two schools to one school and all of that and he's been a constant through it all. And so he will be very much missed and I wish him well.
So, a very long time ago-
So, can I read the letter?
Oh, I forgot. I'm so like eager and excited, sorry, I'm devastated losers. Yeah, sorry, and then Chrissy goes, my apologies. I'm so out of order.
Process here.
Dear Dr. Cabral and members of the school committee, I am writing to formally announce my retirement from my position as custodian with the Eastern Public Schools effective last working day, June 30th, 2025. As I prepare to close this significant chapter of my life, I find myself reflecting on my journey within this wonderful community. Born, raised and educated in Easton, I graduated from Oliver Ames High School in 1981. My career began in a local restaurant, but I soon seized the opportunity to dedicate my professional life to Eastern Public Schools. From the moment I was hired to work at the middle school on Lincoln Street to my time spent opening the now Richardson Olmsted School, I have devoted myself to serving the students and staff of this district for 37 fulfilling years. As I look back on my career, I am filled with gratitude for the experiences I have had and the relationships I have built. The memories of working alongside such dedicated colleagues and caring staff members will always hold a special place in my heart. I can honestly say that I will miss the people the most. I want to extend my sincerest thanks to everyone who has been part of my journey here. Your support and camaraderie have made my time at Eastern Public Schools incredibly meaningful. I will carry these fond memories with me into retirement and I will genuinely miss being part of this vibrant community. Thank you once again for everything. I wish Eastern Public Schools continued success in the years to come and I hope to stay in touch. Warmest regards, Russ. So just quickly, Russ, to echo what Dr. Cabral said, just takes such pride in his work and his kindness and even though he does present as quiet, he's very talkative. I'm lucky enough that I don't get to say goodbye to him because I see him in the grocery store often, so I will get to continue to see him in the grocery store and be able to catch up with him, but he will be greatly missed in Easton, so thank you, Russ, for all your work.
So a long time ago, for my older kids, I was the book fair chair for a number of years at Richardson Olmsted. I was the book fair chair of one of the sides, but we did it together. And I have this feeling when I read this letter, I'm like, who doesn't know Russ? Like, if you've actually had any interactions at Richardson Olmsted, it's like you always know Russ. But he was so kind and helped us so much through like the whole, like, the book fair involves moving large, like carts with all the books on it and unfolding them and unpacking them and all the boxes, there's just like so much that goes into it. And he would be there and be like, what do you need? And unlocking the doors and opening the room and like helping us and he was just like, he was just that person who was always there to help. And so I feel like that just embodies who he is and so unflappable through all, whatever kid incidents would happen in the building, he'd just be like, okay, I got it and there to help. So I'm just, I'm really appreciative and sad to have you leave.
I will say that, am I on? I will miss seeing Russ at the RO drop-off line because he was always out there, which probably wasn't even, you know, part of his scope of his job, but because he was such a, he is such a friendly, nice guy. He's greeting all the students as they were walking into the building, coming in, getting dropped off in the morning, so that's my memory.
So Russ, thank you for all of those years and we hope that you love your retirement. So I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Russ Manino with regret.
So moved Persio.
Thank you, second? Second, anybody?
I thought you were doing the second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay. Jeff Hammond. Jeff Hammond is the Maintenance Supervisor at Blanche Ames. I remember working with him at first at Moreau Hall. He moved to Blanche Ames when the school opened. He has been with us for 20 years. Jeff was also, prior to Moreau Hall, he was at Parkview. He also does the ordering for our district. I don't know that a lot of people know that, but he works with the Director of Operations and Facilities and literally does the ordering of the paper goods and the cleaning supplies and does all that in partnership with Tony Kopas, our director. We still have a supply van in the district. He's the guy that takes all the supplies all over to the other custodians, the maintenance and gets things done. When he first put in for the supervisor position at Blanche Ames, I thought, that's going to be a great job. Maintenance in a brand-new building, that's going to be awesome. And then I became knowledgeable about the things that go wrong in a brand-new building and he always rolls with the punches and is always very helpful. He serves us down at Central Admin as well and just has been a great addition to the district, not, you know, never mind at Blanche Ames. It's, it can be tricky to have custodians during the day who maybe don't, maybe like children so much. That's not the case here in Easton. Our, all of the people that work during the day, they're really special and you would never know that they aren't teachers in the building. You wouldn't. Jeff, Russ, the other amazing custodians and maintenance, they, it takes a special person, you know? They're talking to the kids in the cafeteria during lunch, they're at the line in the morning when the kids are coming in. Some of them do the morning announcements when the principal can't. I mean, they're just such an integral part of our school community, maybe not what the role is in other districts, but certainly are here. And so, again, another, you know, all of them are colleagues and friends and we're going to miss them, but very happy for Jeff as well.
Do you want to read it? Yeah, I have to read Chris, right?
See, now it's on me.
It's been a long read. Dear Dr. Cabral, I will be officially retiring from the Eastern School System on June 27th of this year. I would like to thank the school system for the opportunity to work here for the last 20 years. The friends I have made and the memories will last a lifetime. Respectfully, Jeff Hammond. I was just going to share that when I first was introduced to Jeff, I think he was getting a child's hat off the roof of Moreau Hall. And he was like hanging, you know, with a broom, trying to get it off and he's like, oh, hi, how you doing? Just like it was another, you know, another part of his day.
And little fun fact, if I can interject, to get on the roof at Moreau Hall, you had to climb out of one of the windows in the classroom to get up to the, yeah, we've done that, that was not fun. So that's what he did to go get that hat.
Yeah, and so now when I see him, you know, he's in the cafeteria talking with kids, always just biggest smile on his face, always smiling and just so helpful and-
just biggest smile on his face, always smiling and just so helpful in everything that we ask him to do. He's going to be greatly missed as well. I mean, everyone's going to be sorely missed. It's just, it's a, it's a new era and, and not seeing Jeff in the building will be definitely a change. So, thank you, Jeff, for all you've done and we will miss you.
So, Jeff, as Chrissy said, thank you for all you've done and for smiling and being friends to our children and just being wonderful to be around and we hope you enjoy your retirement. I will take a motion to accept the retirement of Jeff Hammond with regret.
So, move, Loomis.
Second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? Thank you. We're getting there.
Just for the audience at home, we have two left. Christine Blaylock, she is a paraprofessional at Blanche Ames currently. She has been with us since two thousand and twelve. We started at the same time. She is in the kindergarten, as a paraprofessional in kindergarten. She also survived the move to Blanche Ames. And if you've ever been in a kindergarten classroom, you know that it really takes special personality to be there all day long with the kiddos and she does a phenomenal job, very patient, again, very kind with the kids, always a smile and she, she will definitely be missed.
Dear Eastern School Committee, please accept this as official notice of my retirement as of the end of the school year. I have worked for the Eastern Public Schools for over twenty years. During these years, I have been lucky to have taught many wonderful children. I am grateful also for the opportunities I have had to work with dedicated, hardworking, and talented teachers. I started at Moreau Hall as a substitute teacher and quickly became a core sub and the building sub. I have spent the last thirteen years as a kindergarten paraprofessional and a special education inclusion paraprofessional. I am proud to have worked in the schools in the town of Easton. Sincerely, Christine Blaylock.
So, it's fun in, when you're walking through the halls to see her in the halls. She's always, always has kids with her. She's always, you know, doing activities with them and making sure that they get to where they need to be and she's always smiling, as Dr. Cabral said. Just thank you for all you've done, the population that you work with. It's not easy to work with that group and, and she does it with ease and we will miss you greatly. Enjoy, enjoy retirement.
All right, so I'm just going to echo what Ms. Pruitt said. Thank you. I am sure your job was not an easy one, but we are so very grateful that you are here to do that and to help our kids and we need more people like you. So, thank you and enjoy your retirement.
I'll just say, it really does take a special person to play that role with the kindergartners and some of the special education. It takes a level of patience that I try to emulate as a parent when I see the way that some of our parents interact with our kids and have infinite patience and infinite understanding and compassion. And I think of that some days when my kids drive me bonkers. I love them, but I don't have all that patience that they do. So, I think of you all and the model that you exhibit and I appreciate all that you do. I know it's a hard job.
I'll take a motion to accept the retirement of Christine Blaylock with regret. Please?
So, move, Loomis.
Second?
Persio, second.
All in favor? Thank you.
And we have Heidi Chamberlain. Heidi is Office Assistant at Easton Middle School. She has been, she started as a substitute. We love to promote from within at Easton Junior High School and was a substitute in the Special Education Office. And now you see Heidi when you come into the middle school. So, she is one of our front faces of people who welcome you when you come into the building. I am going to miss the updates on the grandbaby updates, not baby anymore, but we'll leave a hole there in that office. First, they had the Exodus of Judy and now Heidi. Those, they were two staples there for quite some time. So, definitely a loss. Again, well wishes, definitely well-earned well wishes.
Dear Ms. Cabral, I am writing to formally announce my retirement from my position as Office Assistant at Easton Middle School effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. After twenty rewarding years with Eastern Public Schools, I have decided that it is time for me to embark on this new chapter of life. I am immensely grateful for the opportunities I have had during my time here. Working alongside such dedicated colleagues and wonderful students has been an incredibly enriching experience. I will cherish the memories and friendships I have developed over the years. I would like to give a special thanks to Luke Carroll for being a solid principal and vice principal during my time at the Eastern Middle School. Eastern Public Schools are lucky, are extremely lucky to have him. Also Nate Crossman, AKA Nate the Great, has been an outstanding addition to Eastern Middle School. It was a great year working with him. Please let me know how I can assist in the transition during the remainder of my time here. I am committed to ensuring a smooth handover of my responsibilities. Thank you once again for all your support and encouragement. I look forward to staying connected in the years ahead. Warm regards, Heidi Chamberlain.
So, Heidi wears flip-flops all the time, even in like the coldest days. So, have fun, hopefully she'll be in warmer places with her flip-flops. But she's, it's always nice to go in and be greeted by Heidi. The kids just know her so well and she knows all of them. And I just wish her the best of luck and just a wonderful retirement.
So, I just want to thank you, Heidi, for all of your years of service. I'm sure you saw all kinds of things going through that at Eastern Middle School. Thank you very much and we hope you enjoy your retirement.
You had to work in that office filled with lunchboxes and the bags of all the kids who get all their sports equipment dropped in there. It was like your workspace became like the locker room for everything, I know. So, thank you.
Okay. Back to our agenda.
Did you vote?
Vote.
Sorry.
I will take a motion to accept Heidi Chamberlain's retirement with regret.
Hamilton?
Persio, second.
All in favor? Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so back to our agenda. Marvel, are you still there? She is? Marvel, do you want to do Student Representative to the School Committee update?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, good evening. I have a little bit of a different update tonight focusing on the senior class, you know, as we approach our final day of school tomorrow. I'd just like to take a moment on behalf of the seniors to express our deepest gratitude to the Eastern Public School staff and, you know, everyone who's supported us throughout our educational journey, from our earliest days in pre-kates, you know, even just our final moments as high school students. This is going to be, I apologize for it being a little lengthy, but like there are so many thanks to give and I don't even think I got everyone. But to the teachers, I just wanted to thank you for equipping us with, you know, the knowledge, for challenging us to think critically and encouraging us to grow. But even more importantly, thank you for the personal connections, you know, the guidance and the patience that you guys have shown all along the way. Whether we had you in class or not, each of you has shaped who we are, creative, resilient, and ready for the future. To the paraprofessionals, your compassion and dedication have supported students of all needs in your presence, whether in the classroom or just simply offering a little smile in the hallway, has truly made a big difference. To the custodians, thank you for, you know, taking pride in your work and creating a safe, clean, and welcoming space for us to learn. Really cared for our schools behind the scenes every single day. To the nurses, your care went far beyond ice packs and Band-Aids. Thank you for supporting our health and well-being and for always asking how we're doing, even if we, you know, didn't have the words to answer. To the secretaries, your calm presence, organizational skills, and warm greetings helped keep our schools running smoothly. Whether we are lost, late, or needed help, we could always count on you. To the Guidance Department, thank you for helping us plan our futures, support our mental health, and manage the many challenges of growing up. Your advice, encouragement, and open doors meant everything to us. To our principals and vice principals, thank you for your leadership, for cheering us on in the halls and always holding us accountable when needed. Most of all, thank you for advocating for us and always working to create the best possible environment for students to thrive. And then finally, to every other member of the Eastern Public Schools team who has supported us in ways large and small, thank you. From the lunch staff to IT personnel or to crossing guards and bus drivers, the roles have shaped our experiences and we truly are very grateful. As we close this chapter and look ahead, we carry with us the lessons, values, and care we receive from this incredible community. The support at Eastern Public Schools has helped mold us into the graduates we are so proud to be. Thank you.
That was great, Marvel. That was awesome. That was beautiful. Yeah. That's so great.
I want to be like Marvel.
Too kind, too kind.
Does anyone have any questions for Marvel?
I will be giving you guys an update, I promise, next week on like everything. Or next meeting, sorry.
I'm going to miss you a lot, Marvel.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we all will. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda. Discussion with possible vote on Bi-County Collaborative rental space. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. In our efforts to not only save as much money as possible, but also to generate revenue, it is really difficult to find opportunities for that in a public school system. But one of the things we've been able to do previously with the North River Collaborative is to rent some spaces at the Richardson Olmsted School for them to use. And now, we are presented with a wonderful opportunity to do the same at Eastern Middle School with the Bi-County Collaborative. So, Director Davidson is here to explain a little bit about the program. As you know, we are members of the Bi-County Collaborative. I am fortunate to sit on the board and they were in need of some space and we just happened to be able to accommodate them in this particular year. And I'll let Director Davidson fill in some details and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, School Committee. As a proud member of the, member District of Bi-County Collaborative, Eastern Public Schools has had a long and strong collaborative partnership with BIKO, which provides high-quality programming and supports for our students and staff across our region. Earlier this spring, BIKO informed us that they were losing one of their leases to classrooms in a neighboring district and asked board members if anyone would consider renting some available spaces to them. Following that request, BIKO representatives visited multiple schools across the region, including Eastern Middle School, to assess potential options for the upcoming school year. After multiple visits and walkthroughs with our staff and a thorough process, BIKO expressed interest in entering in a lease agreement with the Eastern Public Schools for three classrooms and one office space at Eastern Middle School. Tonight, we are presenting a draft lease agreement for your review. This proposal was built by me, Taylorman, and Costa and has incorporated feedback from both Bi-County Collaborative and the Eastern Public Schools. We look forward to discussing the proposal with each of you.
Do members have questions?
So, I see that they will be paying Eastern Public Schools three thousand, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents?
Yes. Bi-County Collaborative, as part of their agreements with neighboring districts in their budget process, have a square footage rental price that they operate with. It is in line with what we charge North River Collaborative. So, we felt comfortable moving forward and making that recommendation to you tonight. And so, that, that price is built off of the square footage of the three classrooms and the office space that they would be renting.
Do anyone have any other questions? Could you tell me, do you know approximately how many students would be in each classroom?
Yes. So, it is one program that would be renting the space. They have twelve students as of right now. They have two classroom teachers, but they would like the third classroom. And then throughout the year, this is also a middle school program. So, it's students that are sixth through eighth grade from neighboring districts. And so, we felt comfortable moving forward with that type of model within our middle school.
And will they be, is it going to be just a self-contained classroom? Do they, will they go to like art and music and PE and lunch?
So, their program would be not using our programming that we have set up. They would be using some of our spaces. When we met with Principal Carroll, part of some of the tours, they have opportunities for physical education classes when ours are not running. They have chances to use some of our spaces that are not being operated. And they also would be part of our overall operation of the schools. So, they would be part of our staff per se, where they would be on, you know, communications to the school. They would know about events going on, just like North River Collaborative is at Moreau. They would be able to attend some school-wide events and things like that, but they would be using spaces that are not operating at that time. There are potential students that would be returning to District from their programming and sometimes within the agreements that they've had in place prior, they would use some of the inclusive opportunities that we have to see if students are ready for that. And we'd be working through BIKO, with BIKO in Eastern Middle School and what that looks like if that opportunity arises.
Did you have questions, Kelly?
Can you just explain what exactly BIKO is?
Sure. Bi-County Collaborative is a special education collaborative when there are services that schools are unable to offer in, with their own staff. When we, when we say we outplace a student, several times we outplace them to a Bi-County Collaborative setting for day programs. And then there are others for extended programs. But Bi-County, BIKO, Bi-County, is one of the several in the area. North River Collaborative, again, is another. We're, we're only members of Bi-County, but we have students that are in several different collaboratives and they offer different services for students. It's very carefully chosen that services fit the profile of the particular child that is in need of services and so on. But most of the collaboratives are actually renting spaces in school buildings like this. It's a very common model.
Is BIKO just a sixth through eighth program?
No, they're not, no.
They actually have programming preschool through twenty-two. And the reason that collaboratives rent from public schools is because outside of the public school, it is actually recognized as another public school, but it's a least-restrictive environment after what we have as our schooling. It's, it's more incorporated with what we do versus what a private day would look like. And so, sometimes you'll see a lot of the collaborators renting space from the school district, so they would have those inclusive opportunities because it's a least-restrictive environment than a private day. BIKO also is now renting entire school building and wall pole. And so, they operate a more restrictive environment there for programming preschool through twelve or twenty-two years of age. And so, there's different opportunities that they look to incorporate within their programming to meet the needs of all sorts of students.
And who drafted this lease?
Our attorneys. So, me, Taylorman, and Costa.
The town attorney. All of our contracts go through the town's attorneys.
If an Eastern student is using, is being placed into the BIKO program, would they have the opportunity to ride the bus and be incorporated with the rest of the Eastern students or do they need to be transported separately? Or does that depend upon the student and their needs?
That depends on the IEP. And so, because we have not had that level of programming here, it would be a situation that if it does come up, we would work through that and provide the least-restrictive environment for the student. Transportation is extension of the classroom within the IEP. And so, if the student receives specialized transportation, they would, they would have a van. If they did not, we could talk about what that looks like to meet the needs of the student.
And then I had a, you actually, I have one of the questions. I had another question. I want to make sure I frame it carefully. For the sake of the students who are in the program, is, are the rooms that they are in, in the midst of and incorporated with other classrooms or do they have some, are the classrooms somewhat separated, meaning that if a child was moved from the public school program into one of these programs, does that, do they have some level of discretion of privacy in that? Does that make sense as a question? I don't know where the rooms are placed in the building, but I'm just thinking about children who may be sensitive to being moved out of a regular classroom and into one of these programs. Typically, you're out of the building and you're not still like intermingling with your peers. And in this case, you would be intermingling with your peers potentially, so.
Yeah. When, when we look for audit district programming, there's so many pieces that go into identifying the appropriate placement for a student. So, we would look into if that would be the appropriate place for a student within the own building, because there are other programs available to students and partnerships that we have with other collaboratives and also private day schools. And so, we, we always take all those pieces into consideration when we're making recommendations for the, for a school.
Thank you. I, I love that they.
I love that they could start to, in a least restrictive environment, incorporate back into the school as well, or take advantage of some of the programming of the school. I think that's great. I just wanted to think about the inverse from a student's standpoint. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? You looking for a vote tonight on this, on the contract? Okay. So I am gonna make a motion to approve the license agreement to enter and use school facilities between the Easton Public Schools and the Bi-County Collaborative to rent two classrooms in an office, sorry, two classrooms in an office? Three classrooms in an office? At the Easton Middle School. Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and vote to approve grant. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So, one of our amazing RNs, Eileen Gardner, is here. She runs this, the Phenomenal 84 program that you are familiar with. We've had some terrific presentations from the 84, soon to be known as the 10, hopefully, or something like that. She can explain that if she'd like. She has, or is, excuse me, presenting the Creative Spark Grant that offers $5,000 mini-grants to youth-serving organizations who are interested in creating a project that is for the school, that is creative, and is helpful to students, and that is related to the 84's mission. So I would love to welcome her up to tell you a little bit about, a little bit more about this and the intentions of the use of it, and we look forward to seeing the result of this amazing product.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. Hi, so, Easton Middle School was actually the first middle school youth prevention that 84 took on six years ago. And we have several high school members that are state representatives that present yearly at the State House. One of our attentions, Ms. Tia Haraf, who is the OA health teacher, and I, we go to the State House. We actually have a presentation that we keep saying we're gonna bring to you, but I have put it in a website that we developed as a private grant. The 84 is funded largely by the Juul lawsuits that have occurred when they got the money from the lawsuits that were, they really, you know, got a lot of students and children who were, you know, nicotine abuse. This is how they distribute the funds back. And it's very strange, because they were basically like, it's just been such a crazy year, but they were like begging, like the middle school, they're like, will you please do this? Because like our kids have just been very involved. And so it's called the Creative Spark Grant, and it's a $5,000 grant. And the students, and the money has to be used towards the club and, so that they can make podcasts, and they could do a creative project that could be an art project, website. It tends to be kind of, you know, STEM-based, and our help club voted to do the podcasts. And we're so lucky, because we have Mrs. Skorbowski, who is our media and literacy teacher over at EMS, and she is helping us. We met with Ms. Remos. Ms. Santos has helped me, because we had to create a special commission, SLIP, in order for the middle school children to do it. And we also kind of looked at it differently, because usually when you do a podcast, you wanna like, you know, you know, put it on Spotify. I was like, well, I don't really want my middle school kids on Spotify yet, you know? So we're actually doing a Google-based website, and we will have the podcast on there, so we can start sharing it, like, you know, with parents and the students first, like, rather than patiently. But the sixth graders were. And it's been a lot of fun. We filmed three of the four podcasts, and I actually can send out an email, like, what I was thinking of doing is I can just send this sheet to them, and you can actually see what the website looks at, like, so you guys will get to see it before pretty much anybody. And it's really cute, because they have made it. They have, they have a lot of say into it. And the podcasts are great, and it's like, the conversations are so authentic. They write the podcasts, you know, so they can do everything, production. I am kind of just guiding them, and I've also had a lot of help from Ms. Sparrow, our health teacher, and Ms. Skorbowski. And included, so we use this, what we're using, what we're going to use, the great fort is like snacks, and I follow all the EPS health guidelines. And usually, when they do it at the middle school level, you can actually pay students to work on these projects, like before we did a community assessment, where they actually went around and took pictures of the playgrounds, and like would take pictures of like, we did find any vape materials, but it was all cigarettes. So they're designing like non-smoking signs. So it's really, like, I can't pay them, so I have to order them blank. So jackets, their parents are probably like, oh my God, and a t-shirt, but they love them. And they also went to the State House. They're invited every year. We actually have three state leaders, all of them are Oliver Ames right now, Eva Vieira, Rosie Cedita, and Miasatos. And they're just such amazing students. And actually, Eva Vieira is going to college to study community and public health. So I, and Cara Delamere, too, who she, she's going for community and public health. So I think it kind of helps someone that don't identify me, putting some medical stuff in, you know, suss it out a little bit, like that stuff. So they did, the other thing that they've offered us is they did offer us $1,000, too. So it's a total of six. And poor Andrea and Craig have been helping me. You get two pens. Because, start our play, I, Mrs. I can put a bandage on all of you. Managing a grant has been a learning curve, and managing sixth graders is easier than that. So, that being said, I hope you'll consider it. I do want to let you know that you have a link, I sent you a link to what they have found, and we could, right now, we're doing stuff, we need to have collaborations, so you'll see, we actually have buttons for like Saris Village, Easton Middle School, and the84.org. So it's all student-based, everything is, all the materials that they use, I make sure it's within five years, which is like medical grade, you don't use anything that isn't a current source. We were doing like a lot of media learning, like, where do you learn this? How do you interpret it? So, and they love it. And I'm really excited for you to see the podcast, because they're very honest, and like, it's amazing what Jessica Skorbowski can also do with that, because they also wanna, like, she promised to make them a blooper reel, so they're really serious, and so they chop out karate moves, because they wanted to get it for real, so.
Funny.
All right, I'm going to start to ramble, because I'm tired, but I, we will make sure that the money is, it has to go into the club, and we're trying to be very thoughtful with some of the purchases that we're making, like, they want to do something, like, we're buying like green models that we can have Ms. Sparrow use in the classroom, too, and that we can keep using in our education, that all we can use, too, and the lungs and stuff like that, like, we're trying to be more, like, if the kids go out, let them be able to blow or grab, and they get to pick things, and I think they're fresh off.
So you said the total of the grant is $6,000?
Yes. The one is, it's like a, I don't know, if stipend is the right word, but it's just for any club purchase, and so I can be a little more flexible with that. And the $5,000 has to be spent directly on the grant, so I just have to prove that.
So they're two different grants, really?
Yes, yes. So I'm keeping a spreadsheet and keeping a running total of what we are spending, and we try to make sure that we spend all of it, that we get it. But I think what they're going to do, if we, I have to let them know in due time, share, because they don't want to take anything back, you know? They're usually pretty much begging us to do a project, so.
And the parent organization that this is coming from is?
So it's called the84.org, it is Massachusetts Youth Prevention and Nicotine Use. And it's backed by, it's backed by the Department of Public Health. It's state-based.
Okay. And remind me what the 84 represents?
So the 84, when they started this, it was 84% of students in Massachusetts City smoked.
And now it's 97.
Now it's 97. And when we did our survey in 2020, was it 2021 or 2023? But our number was 97, so we went to 97, then the state got to 97. I do think everyone got to 97, because it was COVID. We're doing a really good job at trying to get it out there. And, you know, kids listen to other kids. They don't want, but then like, some of the conversations we're having with Ms. Sparrow, it's just so awesome to see her in her environment, and the way the kids are talking, it's all coming from them. So, and I do think that the parents will get a lot of it, and then I'm hoping they'll click down on some of those links. And it's all convention-based, but we do have links to like the My Quit and stuff that a teenager could use, and we also do a lot of talking about like, like, mental health Awareness Month is May. So they're having like this huge poster contest, so putting stuff on there, rolling that into, you know, substance abuse and, you know, nicotine use, like how, like, we can take care of mental health. People who have better mental health are less likely to smoke or vape, so we're rolling that in, and having their takes on it are just amazing. It's really, really great.
It's a really engaged group. Engaging advisor.
Yeah. They're doing a poster contest, and I made send an invite out, like, the posters coming in are amazing. It's called Pathway to Health, and they had to hide a hashtag at Mental Health Matters, and Saris Village, Be Kind, Help Others in there, and it's just mind-blowing. It almost like they really took it on a challenge, and we have like about 50 posters right now.
They're so creative.
And Saris Village helped out with that, so.
Great. I would love to see them.
This is amazing. I have been so impressed with everything that you've done with the 84 Club. And I remember, a few years ago, at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee meeting, the students came and presented to us, and it was so impressive, everything that you're doing, and their presentation skills alone were incredible. And I, my son was probably in first grade at that point, and I was like, okay, I need him to want to join this.
I can't wait to have him next year.
And he's in fifth grade, so fingers, fingers crossed that he's gonna be your next new member.
Oh, I hope so. I look forward to seeing that. And, you know, the kids, like, they come and do public speaking workshops for the kids. And so we actually, when we went to the State House, it was amazing, we got right into, like, we met Senator Driscoll, got right in the office, and I mean, it's, like, they were telling him all about, you know, what they want him to fight for.
Yeah, they have so much confidence, it's great.
It was really good. So I will, I'm gonna also, I'm gonna have them come and do their, they want to do their presentation. And they're doing a concert tonight, and they have something else. I'm gonna email it to you, just so you can see it, because I don't want there to be too much to go, but, oh, it's amazing, there's like all professional pictures they took at the event that they were at, and our kids, like, if you go to the website, most of the people are our kids, because they're also very photogenic. You know, it's all Rosie, and, you know, Mias up there, and they're always the first ones who's so well-spoken, you know, and then there's me. And so, they're great, they are really good.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions?
I'm always in awe of you. I don't know how you do it and keep track of all the kids and all the things, but thank you for leading through this, because we know how hard this is and how serious it is, and how big of a challenge it is.
Well, they do with one thing, they come up with something else.
They come up with the next thing and find a new way to hide it, and all the things that we've witnessed over all the years. We have kids of similar age. And yet, you're making an impact, so I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of the other staff who's supporting you and not Ms. Skorbowski, not earning her time, Ms. Sparrow, like, I think it's amazing to be.
Definitely, and it's a diligent effort, for sure.
Important effort, so thank you.
Thank you. So I will take a motion to accept the two grants from Creative Spark, a $5,000 grant and a $1,000 grant. Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging in late for this, too.
Feedback on the Oliver Ames new schedule. Dr. Cabral?
So, there is a new schedule this year, as you're aware, and Principal Kavanaugh has been giving you periodic updates on the progress, lessons learned, things that are working well, and so on. She's here tonight to give you another update, and I believe, do you have slides to share? So if you wanted to move to the front row so that you can see the slides, she's going to come up and present you with some information, and as usual, answer any questions you have about how it is going and their plans for the future.
I really appreciate your time. So this is one of three or four updates I've been giving throughout the year since we changed the Oliver Ames schedule. So the last presentation I gave to you was the H Block feedback, as well as the results of the Schedule Committee's recommendations for next year, and that hasn't changed. So this is gonna focus on the late start PLC time, that was the other schedule change that we made this year. So just a reminder of what's new in our schedule, the additional of a flexible learning block, which we call H Block. It started as three times per cycle, but we moved that to four times per cycle, due to the feedback from both staff and students, that three times was not enough. And then we adjusted advisory, so advisory used to be every day for 12 minutes, and now it's three times a cycle, our cycle's seven days for 14 minutes. And then we added 10 late start professional community learning, professional learning communities throughout the year. So this is just a reminder of what we talked about with the H Block survey, which was that we'll continue with the current schedule for the 2025-26 school year, and that we want to continue to explore opportunities for enrichment activities during H Block. So we started it being focused on academic support from teachers. However, over the past few months, we started to add some enrichment activities. A great one that just happened is that the Best Buddies students hosted the North River Collaborative students to come over and do group games and stuff together during an H Block, because they are unable to come to our Best Buddies program after school. So that was, we really want to explore more opportunities like that. We've also done some walks outside and things that are enriching and bring different, are more inclusive, they bring different groups of kids together in the same space. So the late start PLC survey went out, they finished their PLCs this month, and so I, before the last late start, I sent out a survey to them, and we looked at the impact of the PLCs on professional growth and classroom instruction, and we looked, and we reflected on what they accomplished with their late start PLC time. So I'm gonna share with you the survey data, and then I'm going to share some bullet points of what some of the groups accomplished during that time. So I had 78 staff complete the survey. 86% stated that the PLC time had some, to a significantly positive impact on their professional growth. 88% did say that they had a positive impact on student learning and instruction, and then 85% said that they would want to continue with the late start PLC time next year. This is some of the reflections and the data that they shared regarding what they completed to reach their goals in the late start PLC time. So I don't want to read out loud to you, and you will have copies of this, but them things to highlight. So I don't want to read out loud to you and you, you will have copies of this, but them things to highlight. The ninth grade English teachers rewrote a lot of their curriculum over the course of last summer. And they spent the time reviewing lessons and comparing the STAR data that their students were taking and their common assessments to identify areas of deficit and then restructuring their curriculum to make sure that they meet those standards and that it's revised so that it's aligned to our objectives and making sure that those common assessments that we have across all ninth grade are aligned. Math did something very similar. They aligned their three, vertically aligned their algebra-based courses by looking at the standards and putting specific questions into common assessments so that they're assessing students' abilities, as you can see in the exponential functions section. And they're gonna continue to do that work moving forward. And music created common assessments that meet the standards of all three core performing arts classes, which is band, chorus, and orchestra. The academic support teachers created baseline assessments around self-advocacy, time management, and study skills. They collected data and you're using this information to create mini lessons to teach these skills to students in their academic support classes. Business and Applied Art created a rubric of soft skills that are critical for the workplace that they shared with students and created self-reflections for students based on the projects that they do so that students are understanding not just the curriculum, but the, the workplace skills, communication, collaboration, critical thinking skills, not just being problem solvers, but problem finders. The clinical team, I've put the whole paragraph there, I'm not gonna read it to you. But the reason is that they went in with one goal and it didn't work. And they got feedback from students and from the staff. And then they adjusted their goal to create checklists to support students in understanding the type of work that they do with their school adjustment counselors and their school psychologists and the progress that they're making as they reach their goals, which really were focused around self-regulation. And then we had a social studies team that created a comprehensive manual and guidelines for teachers on engaging students with AI appropriately in the classroom. So just, just a handful. I do have, if you have any other questions about some of the other things that, that we did during this time, I do have the rest of my, my data here. So really our action steps moving forward, I've collected feedback from the staff. I do want to get feedback from other stakeholders about the late start and the PLC time. And then when I present my school improvement plan to you on June twelfth, I will also present recommendations for next year around the late start and PLC time.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Members have questions or comments?
You mentioned seventy-eight staff completed the survey, out of how many?
There's between eighty and ninety teachers. And if you add the paras, it's over, it's, there's about twenty paras, so it's a little over a hundred.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I was really excited, actually. This is a tough time of year. And it's adding something to the teacher's plate and I recognize that. But I think they appreciate having a voice. I get that feedback pretty frequently, so.
Can I ask maybe the obvious question? What does PLC stand for?
Yeah, professional learning community. So it's a group of teachers that come together with a common goal. So we kept it pretty, pretty consistent within departments for the most part this year. There were a few groups that had a variety of different departments working together, particularly at a previous school committee meeting, I shared that there was a group of teachers from the Social Studies Department, Special Education, and multilanguage learners that wrote a basic, how, US History 101. Like you're, you just moved to America. We've been learning about US history for years. Like here's the essential things that you need to know as you enter into our country. And that's gonna be used by the ML teachers, yeah, to support those students, yeah.
Are, are all teachers involved in PLCs?
They are.
So they each have a group?
Each have a group.
Can I have, what are, what is the context of a late start? Or background details for someone who may not know much?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, one of the toughest things about high school scheduling is it doesn't provide you, it's very challenging to create common planning time or professional learning communities because of the rotating schedule and the fact that we can't, if we try to create blocks where teachers have the same block free, it does a disservice to students because we base our students, our schedule off of the students' needs first. And so something that's common in a lot of high schools in the area is to create time, late start. Some schools have it every week, some have it like once a month like us, where the school, there's no teaching and the school, the students, the teachers are be, are able to spend that time together. For us, we chose late start because research just shows that being able to sleep in when applicable, when, when, I shouldn't say applicable, when, when it works for the student is something that can benefit their health. So we, we talked, we met, we talked for a long time about this last year as a school committee meeting to talk about the, the pros and cons of this and decided to give it this year and to see how it goes and then make a decision of something we want to continue in the future.
Have you heard feedback from parents about how they like the late start?
Yeah, that's something I need to get more of. The feedback I've had has been anecdotal. And same thing with the students. It's, and when I talk with them at back-to-school night or, or I have my, my parent DEI group or my school, my school council parents. I mean, overall, we, I think we know because we've talked about this, the traffic is the major issue with late start. Other than that? Yep. Other than that, so that is something, so obviously that is something that we, I mean, Dr. Cabral and I have talked extensively about it. And if we were to recommend this again for next year, what would that look like? Timing-wise, to make sure that we're not creating more congestion in the district.
I think if you could get a coffee truck that the kids could buy from?
I know.
They would be more than happy to buy.
Yeah, early.
They're all at Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes.
Or the Beanery.
And so you're gonna give us your recommendation on whether to continue this at year?
Yep, at, at June twelfth, yep.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
If possible, I'd love to read the artificial intelligence documents.
I know, me too. I haven't read it yet. I will send it to you guys. Yeah, I'm very excited.
I was like, I'll try to put my work hat away.
It's also great when a PLC is going, when that time is going on. I was able to, you know, walk through and get to some of the groups and just hear, hear them and how engaged they are in the work that they're doing and the excitement. And then, and then the bell rings and the time of the kids come and they're like, oh, because they just want to continue.
Continue, yeah.
But it's, it is great to see everybody and how immersed they all are in that time with each other.
That's great. I'm happy to hear that it's working out so well.
Yeah, it really is. I'm, yeah, I'm very thankful to the staff. They really took it and ran with it and did some pretty amazing things with only ten, you know, fifty-minute sessions, so.
Well, even their flexibility and of course your flexibility as a leader to make mid-course adjustments, which are not easy. It's tough to have a new schedule at all, but then to make the mid-course adjustments because you know it might not be working perfectly for kids and to switch that off, that's, that's really very generous of them to do that for the benefit of the kids and for their work as well. We want to make sure we're making the, the best possible use of their time and they're able to be together, too.
I will say, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I, I know we spent a lot of this on the, the PLCs. Everything I hear and understand from my kids who are in the high school is the H block is working fabulously for them. And I think the thing that's the best about it is how much the kids self-schedule and self-plan. So I got a little tutorial the other day of like how they schedule, personal phone used. And it was like, hey, you know, this is how we do this. And it's awesome. Like it's forcing thinking ahead, it's forcing planning. Obviously for the kids that don't, the teachers can request them in. The extra, the flip from the more advisory to the bigger H block, I think, has been a huge help as well. So that mid-year pivot on that and the bell schedule thing just seemed to be like shockingly, like two keys that got unlocked in this whole process.
Yes, I agree.
It is super awesome to see them figuring out how to manage their needs, to take the makeup test, to use the time. Like it is a, I had a whole car full of them for the freshman dinner dance.
Yep.
And it was like this, like, didn't you know chatter about, and then H block, I did this, and then I went to see him, and then da-da-da-da. And it's just, it's like, okay. They all, but they use it really, really well and they learn how to navigate quickly.
And they're learning, they're learning how to advocate for themselves.
Exactly.
And that's a skill that they need when they leave high school.
Exactly.
It's like the number one skill that, you know, one of the number one skills they need when they leave high school is how to advocate for themselves.
Yep.
Yep. And executive functioning and time management.
Well, the time management is big. I say that to them all the time. You're gonna leave us and you're gonna, if you go to college, you're gonna be in class half the time you're in class right now, right? So I have to teach you some time management skills. If you go to H block and you don't do the work you were planning to do and now you have to do it at nine o'clock at night, like that was a learning experience. Hope you've learned a lot from it, it'll help you in your future, you know?
Well, they'll pre-plan, they get upset if a teacher moves a test. Just for perspective, it's going, a teacher moves a test and they're like, but I scheduled to be in his H block the day before so we could review, da-da-da-da. And they're, I'm like, you can still review it.
Yeah.
But like, but they think that far ahead. Like they're really getting the concept of how to do that, which is amazing when you see that from freshmen.
Yeah, I agree.
Coming through.
All right, I'm gonna stay up here just because the next thing is, I'm on the agenda for the next one. It's just the next slide.
So the next item on the agenda is a vote to approve the change, a change to the OA program studies. Correct. You can go right ahead.
Great, okay. So after we, so let me start by saying, we appreciate student feedback and what types of courses they want to take. And we have known that we, there is an interest in forensics and astronomy in our students. As a matter of fact, it's two, the two of the most popular of the virtual high school classes that we offer. So those are the, any course that we don't offer at OA that a student would like to take, they can apply to take it virtually through VHS. This year, our science leadership class had low enrollment numbers, so we're not running it. And we were able to, our, for our Bio Two class, we ended up doing a hybrid honors and CP Bio Two option because of the way the numbers fell. It felt like that was in the best interest of our students with, left us the ability to actually offer some of these classes that students are excited, have been asking for. So we're really excited. I give a lot of credit to Ms. Nunciato, who is the Chair of the Science Department, as well as the teachers who are willing to step up and teach these classes. So we are asking for approval to include forensic science and astronomy into the course of study for next year. And we have those classes full, actually.
Utilizing the same staff?
Yes, you got the same staff.
Schedule, just shifting what is available.
Shifting what, elective, yeah. And it's based on the, you know, we base our schedule off the interest of the kids. So if I have seventy kids that want to take astronomy and only five wanted to take science leadership this year, we're gonna run astronomy because that's the, that's the course that is gonna provide the best opportunities for the most number of students.
The two-point-five credits is half your.
Yeah, it's a semester course, yep.
So this says obviously no operational or budgeting or cost impacts whatsoever.
So I've sort of a, a basic question that I'm trying to figure out how to, how to word. But when we've never offered a course before, how does that work with, the, the teacher obviously has to be qualified to teach that kind of class?
Yeah. Yeah. So first of all, both of the teachers' teachings, forensics and astronomy, have taught them before. So we used to offer, we used to offer forensics here and it's the teacher who taught it in the past. And the teacher who's teaching astronomy has taught it in a previous district. The curriculum is something that they can work to develop, but we also have, I mean, we're really lucky. We, we're in a state where people share. So we have curriculums from other districts that have taught this successfully for years that we can use as resources, as well as, you know, looking at the standards and looking at the materials that we've had from teaching these courses in the past.
And through the work with UBD, writing our units, they will continue utilizing time to create the units for these courses.
Yep.
Utilizing the materials that we've borrowed from other districts, but also from what they've taught themselves and, and, and looking at the frameworks.
And it's not uncommon for this to happen. I mean, you, you approved three new English classes this year as well. And so they're doing the same work as, in developing the children's literature class, the sports and literature class, and the media literacy, journalism classes. Those teachers are working right now to develop those curriculums as well.
And we really appreciate the fact that the student voice is considered, that it is solicited, and that meaningful changes are made based on that.
Yeah.
So we're offering what it is that they are interested in pursuing.
I would love forensic science.
I know, I would too.
So the teachers that are teaching this, are they, were they, were they teaching the courses that are not being continued? Are they, is this an additional course load for them? How does that work?
No, it's, no, the way, so after all of the scheduling is done and we try to even out the number of students in every single course, then we look at the teachers who, the, because science has three different licenses, physics, chemistry, and bio, we do that work to figure out how many chemistry classes, how many. So there are teachers from different subject areas teaching based on where the opening was, but more so based on honestly the, the teacher's desire to teach the class because that means something, I want them to have a passion in forensics and astronomy to impart on their students. But then secondarily, where it makes most sense with the schedule in the best interest of the kids and what courses they asked to take next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one other comment. I, I do, I can't say enough how much I value and appreciate the fact that you do give the students voice and choice. It is sort of funny to me because I'll come to a school committee meeting and there's anything OA-related on it. And, you know, everyone knows I have a freshman and I'll say like, hey, did you hear? And it's like, of course I heard. We got an email before you did. Like, and it was like, yo, we filled out the survey, like all of us are excited about it. And I just, I think that's awesome. Like I want them to know before we do. And I love that they feel that empowerment and that like they really did speak up and say, this is exactly what we wanted. And it's not just from looking at the data, like they got to vote, they got to say they would like to enroll in these. I just, I think it's so awesome that I just appreciate how much you ask them and how much they weigh in and get to have a say in all those things.
Thank you.
And that the staff is willing to take that on. I think it's easier for them to take on when the kids are so engaged and they can hear their voices because they show up differently, right? When it's that kind of thing. But I appreciate that. We're, we're teaching young adults and we're letting staff do the things that they love. And I think that's awesome.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the kids for filling out the survey. They're probably sick of surveys from me, but they keep doing it, so.
Maybe we can ask Marvel if the seniors are. But I, from what I hear, no, because they get to have a voice, right? They feel respected and heard.
And, and I think that one of the things that, I've been talking a lot with our Student Advisory Council about ways to increase student voice and it's gonna, you're gonna see it in my school improvement plan in, in a few weeks. But when they see that, that they fill out this survey and then change happens, it means so much to them. And that's huge. Like it actually, yeah.
One thing, just keep on filling out surveys, but then you don't see the result.
And this year they saw it a lot, which is great because we were in a transition year with a new schedule. And so the fact that we made adjustments mid-year based on their feedback, I think, is hopefully gonna build a culture where more kids will speak up because they know if they speak up, we're gonna listen.
The littlest thing was the bell schedule and yet it was the biggest thing.
It was the biggest.
Like I don't have to memorize it anymore. I'm so confused.
So there was like a little adjustment to the bell schedule which made every difference in the world. But it is that, right? It's seeing their voice heard.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you. So I will make a motion to approve to change the Oliver Ames Program of Studies to add forensic science and astronomy. Do I have a second?
First, you have a second.
All in favor?
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming to see us to share all this with us. I know the Program of Studies you need to, but the updates on the schedule is important, too.
Okay, we all set? Okay, next item on the agenda. Vote to approve the schedule for the 2025-2026 School Improvement Plan presentation. Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. This is a simple note for you. And if you accept it, then the middle school and the high school will present their school improvement plans on the school committee meeting of June twelfth. And Blanche Ames and Richardson Olmsted will present their school improvement plans on June twenty-sixth.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Cabral about this?
Why do we vote on it?
That night.
What?
A why do you vote on it?
Yeah, we voting on, we voting on the schedule?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
Do we get the presentations ahead of time to look at or is it first reaction? Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the schedule of school council presentations. Do I have a second?
I'm not in second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, vote to appoint Superintendent to Bi-County Collaborative BiCo Board of Directors, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. So this is a little bit repetitive since we talked about this a little earlier, but I am on the board. And it does give us a seat at the table when we talk about things like, and, and when we talk about things like enrollment, when we talk about expanding programming, we get a say in what the programming is, who the staffing are, who the staffing is made up of, the professional development that's offered. So it is, it is of value to the district, but it is something. district, but it is something that all of the superintendents need to have voted on annually, so I would ask you to, for your consideration in that vote.
Any questions?
No.
Questions, comments, no?
No.
Okay, so I will take a motion to appoint Dr. Cabral to the Bi-County Collaborative Board of Directors.
Just one move, first, you.
Second?
Move is second.
All in favor? Great, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item, quarterly budget review, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks, Andrea, Finance Director, has a presentation for you on the quarterly review, she does have a few slides for you, sorry, it's actually a good opportunity to stretch your legs again.
Stretch, stretch.
Okay, thank you, whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening, school committee and public, tonight, we're going over Q3 2025 budget update and move on to the next slide, I'll go over some key terms, highlights, there were a couple items in your packet that break down by DESI category, our total budget, also by expense category and school location, and then just a quick summary, I will try to be brief, but still going through the different items. From time to time, you'll hear me use different terminology throughout various presentations, I'm only gonna highlight two tonight, because they probably will come up a couple times, just for your frame of reference and for the public, the fiscal year that we are operating with is, of course, the timeframe in which we conduct business, and the timeframe in which we evaluate budget and actual expenses. For Easton Public Schools, this is July 1st to June 30th each year, and then, when you'll hear me throughout the presentation, the number of the fiscal year is represented by the calendar year in which the fiscal year ends, so for example, our current fiscal year spans from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, so we're currently in fiscal year 2025, and the values and numbers I'm representing tonight refer to our operating budget, which is our budget for annual appropriation of funds, for ongoing program costs, which includes salaries, wages, material supplies, purchases of services, and other charges and expenses. Next slide, please. So, I've included just a high-level reminder where we arrived at for our fiscal year 2025 adopted budget, the adopted budget was a 5.78% increase over the prior year, a $2.7 million amount was awarded, and our overall adopted budget for fiscal year 2025 is $49,748,315. Historically, I will also refer to where we were this time last year, which was April, for our 2025 budget presentation, so our current fiscal year budget was in that reactive or essential category, which means we're able to provide staff or resources, but only as a reaction to our current need or mandate, we may not fully satisfy that need or mandate. Next slide, please. So, this slide is just a really high-level depiction of where we are year-to-date, my figures are Q3 2025, so year-to-date data through March 30th of 2025 versus data year-to-date March 31st, sorry, March 31st of 2024, so as of 3/31 or March 31st, we have $19,226,574 remaining in our budget, and then year-to-date, we've spent $30,521,741. Well, comparing that year-over-year, we've spent about $745,000 more same time compared to 3/31 of 2024, we've spent 61.4% of our total budget through 3/31. Next slide, please. So, this slide breaks down our budget by various expense categories, green is our overall salaries and wages, that burnt orange color is purchase of services, and the red is the other charges and expenses, yellow is materials and supplies. I'm not going into the numbers here year-over-year, because the next slide actually breaks down the budget categories, broken down by numeric values, but just to show you that we're pretty much on track in the budget categories as a percentage of the total budget compared to the same time last year, there's not much movement by each category. Next slide, please. So, within your packet, you should have been provided with a breakout of the main categories, the salaries and wages, purchase of services, materials and supplies, and other charges and expenses. So, I wanted to go through these categories and just break down some of the drivers for the changes. So, salaries and wages in the current year-to-date column for reference, the $24.3 million is what we have, what we have spent so far through fiscal year '25 compared to the $23.6 in fiscal year '24. So, overall, an increase of $866,000 in salaries, or about 3.7%, there's no one large category when diving into the values of what that, what's driving that, but overall, just framing, we had lane changes, contractual obligations across our salary categories, and the next category for purchase of services, looking at the $5.4 million versus the $5.3 million, about $93,000 or 1.7% increase. The main driver for that is increases in our transportation, excuse me, transportation and utilities categories, and that was a 1.7% increase overall. Then, materials and supplies had the largest change as far as, I believe, the percentage and the dollar value, so there was a decrease of $240,000, and the main driver for that is instructional supply lines for both Richardson Olmsted and EMS, I believe drilling down into that, that was related to textbook purchases, when comparing the two years, looking at what was baked into the instructional supply line. So, frame of reference, for RO in fiscal year '24, the same time, we spent about $128,000 on instructional supplies, and fiscal year '25 through 3/31, we'd only spent $21,700, and for EMS, same time last year, $54,000, but this new fiscal year, about $8,700, so that's like a main driver for the difference there.
Can I just interject?
Yeah, of course.
With that, part of the reason for that are some of the ESAR grants?
Yes.
That we just finished, so we utilized some of our federal grant funding from COVID for instructional materials at our schools.
Thanks, thank you. And then for other charges and expenses, the main driver there, the difference Q3 of this year of about $177,000 versus Q3 of last year of about $151,000, about a $25,000 change, about $25,000 is related to our increase in our unemployment claims, and you'll see that in the DESI chart of accounts, and I'll highlight that when we go through that. Our unemployment claims have increased, and what is considered allowable by the state has also increased within that same category for what we are paying for as a district and through the town's insurance program, it's unemployment claims, but any settlements that we also have with third parties is baked into the unemployment insurance line.
Next slide, please.
So, the next slide represents another pie chart, just, that represents our budget by location, so this is how we code expenses in our general ledger accounting system by building location, but I wanted to highlight what system-wide means, so within that category, that location code includes expenses that are, consists of salaries, utilities, that also includes special services, but building repairs and improvements that are based off of that namesake that are spread throughout the district, and we have the rest of the building locations along with central administration, just a high-level looking year-over-year to see if there's any really large fluctuations in how we're allocating our expenses by building location. Next slide, please. And then, so this is a, another depiction of our expenses by those same categories, but system-wide is actually broken up then by the special education piece, the central admin piece, and the operations and maintenance piece on this slide. So, what I want to draw to your attention, there's some small changes for Blanche Ames in OA, I'm not going into those just because there, the difference for Blanche Ames is about $16,000 year-over-year, and the difference for Oliver Ames is about $32,000, but what I did drill down to understand what the changes were for Richardson Olmsted, the main changes for the $147,000 difference are related to salaries, so the two categories that had the highest change year-over-year were classroom teachers, an increase of $80,000, and substitutes, an increase of $31,000. For Easton Middle School, once again, also salary changes, but in this category, it was classroom teachers at about $86,000, and then administration at about $80,000, and just remembering that when we compare year-over-year, the previous year, we did not have a second assistant principal administrator at EMS, so we're comparing apples to apples, that sticks out as a change from a budgetary comparison perspective. For system-wide, for the overall changes, high-level for the operations and maintenance piece, transportation and utilities, and I apologize, I'm bouncing around, looking at my notes, and I'm not in sequence, but for operations and maintenance, the $425,000 change, as far as transportation goes, that was a $246,000 increase year-over-year, utilities was a $46,000 increase, and insurance is also baked into that category, almost a $30,000 increase. Then going back in order, special services, the increase of, or sorry, the decrease of the $96,000 is related to transportation and tuition, and I don't believe those are truly decreases based off of where we're at year-to-date through 5/22, but I believe timing differences for transportation of about $107,000 and $129,000 in tuition. For central admin, the main driver for the increase of 65K is a breakdown between our legal services, so comparing year-over-year for what was paid through 3/31, our legal service retainer was still 80K between both years, but we actually paid those invoices more timely this fiscal year, through 3/31, we paid our full 80K retainer, so that is causing part of the fluctuation you see there of the 65K. I'm going to, I'm not gonna stop there, but I do welcome questions, because I am going through lots of data throughout the presentation at any point in time, so the next slide, please. And we historically include, data, the enrollment figures that you see before you are from October 1st of 2024 comparing to October 1st of 2023, when we do our annual state reporting on student enrollment, and from time to time, just as a picture to see how our expenses are aligning with the breakdown between the school categories, it's why we continually have this included in there, just as a frame of reference, as part of the presentation. Next slide, please. And then overall, I include this last summary slide just as a metric of where we are through the reporting period, so we're at 61.4% spend-down of the total operating budget, we're 30, almost 30 million, $30.5 million in total of where we are year-to-date. I'm gonna stop there, I have the DESI chart of accounts, if you guys want to go through the different line item changes, I have explanations for any changes over $20,000 or 20% in change, if you want to drill down in some of those areas, here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, maybe just give us a minute, unless anyone has any questions right now? The codes?
Yeah, like that, what each of that...
Each sections of the line item, yep.
Yep. So, medical state code 2320?
Yes.
That went down?
By 4%. I haven't drilled down into that line, I am going to make an assumption that it is a timing difference, because we have definitely exceeded across many of our contract service lines for special services this year, therapeutics is one of those lines that we have definitely, I've sat down with the director of special services, and we've gone line by line in special services, there are many line items that exceeded some expectations for this fiscal year, so I'm going to say that that's just through 3/31, and not something that you guys should expect to see when I present again at 6/30.
Okay.
The substitute line is up significantly, sorry, Jackie, I was right below you, and so I didn't even wait for you to do that.
No, that's what I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry, I was like, I just kept going down the list, is that a reclassification, or is the substitute need increase?
No, it's actually, the overall increase in substitute expenses is truly increases to what we've spent on substitutes this year, that includes our short-term substitutes and long-term substitutes, and just recalling that early last year, school committee included an increase to what we're paying our certified substitute teacher rates, we also, based off of the DESI codes, we still have some cleanup to do, there's also a 50K increase related to moving subscriptions to the system-wide line, so part of it is reclass, but part of it is the fact that we've increased our substitute costs year-to-date, and we are carefully monitoring that, because typically towards the end of the year, we see a spike in absences, so we may, we'll continue evaluating, but from where I'm at, as of 5/22, we have enough budgeted to make sure we can find substitutes through the rest of the fiscal year.
I know we've talked in the past about potentially doing like a data workshop at some point, it would be great to see the data on the substitutes, particularly short-term sub-changes, how, how those change by school and by different classifications that you think are appropriate, say by like, subject they teach, or even grade level, just so we understand kind of what's happening there, because that does make a lot of...
And the testing and assessment?
What, the 27, 21?
The very last line?
I would have to look that up and get back to you, just because I didn't, I know that's a large percentage increase, but I didn't evaluate anything beyond the $20,000 change and the 20% change, so looking at, we're spending the 81, 31 this year compared to only $803 last year, I do know that we have increased some of our assessment costs from the special ed services side, and we also have some of that allowable costs in one of our grants that Director Davidson applied for, so maybe that was forethought in knowing that we had additional assessment needs going into this year.
Just for those who may be watching, it's a, it's a large percentage, but 7K total, like $7,000, so it's not a huge number.
It's not a large dollar amount.
Yeah, doesn't mean we shouldn't ask about it, just, like, just, in case anyone heard us say a large percentage and got concerned.
I'm just trying to look at what you haven't explained already, then.
I'm sorry for the time, I have font.
I know, really, what are you thinking?
So, at least have, I have some like really quick explanations for...
Oh, my God. Next one, come with a mag.
Thank you so much.
Like I said, I apologize.
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate, this is a very helpful context to have, like, just to have the extra details, and...
You know, if you have a copy, you can get it from...
It does seem like the, like the legal services line, I know there was a timing difference, but it seems like we have significantly increased our use of legal services this year, which I think given every, yeah.
That, that is typical when you have negotiations, because the legal is always involved in negotiations, it's a huge driver in the difference between a negotiation year and a non-negotiation year.
Okay, that's helpful.
If I may just point out also, the decrease in the professional development line right now, where you see 27% decrease, that's also highlighting, we are still benefiting from the federal grants, so the federal grants really did, was able to help us out at the beginning of this year, so that's why you see a decrease there, because that, that paid for a lot of our professional development.
That's great.
What's the driver of our increase in our school committee line? I mean, it's not a huge dollar amount, so maybe just something to look into later, but...
Okay.
No, it's the school committee line itself, it's a small dollar amount, it's, it's only 5K, I just don't know what that came from.
Was it something that could have been reclassified? I feel like something was reclassified into school committee.
I think so, and I, just from what we've, what's baked into there for this year, but I can follow up on that.
Can you just give us examples of what's in that line, too?
Oh, yeah, sure, and examples of, like, it... Oh yeah, sure. And examples of, like, do you want just a report run?
That'd be great, just so we understand.
It's not salaries.
Unlike our colleagues in town, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure his conferences and stuff, but still, it's not that much.
And we do need those for certain things, so I understand fully.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? I'm sure as we look through this, if we have any more follow-up, I'm sure we can have additional questions at additional time.
And a minor fine cost.
And then the next item on the agenda, I do have a slide for it.
Sure.
Okay, so budget transfers.
Can I just make a note, I'm sorry, just procedurally, this is a new agenda item. Sure. Sorry, go ahead. Agenda item number 13.
I appreciate it. So just for frame of reference, we, based off of our budget policy, budget transfer policy, we bring forward to school committee any budget transfers that are transfers between two different DESI codes. So within the DESI chart of accounts, we have a numbering convention, which I know Lauren had brought up as far as the way the expense line is structured, our school committee member, Lumen, has brought up. Within this chart, as an example, the very first transfer before you, the DESI code is numbered 2410. And so what that relates to, from a DESI code description, is text and related material or media. So in this example, we are requesting, there was initially a $15,000 budget in the science department budget within the high school. The school department head, or science department head chair requested a budget transfer to reduce that line, $15,000, and to transfer that for replacement of equipment. They are requesting to purchase a science lab tables, and I believe it's 30 tables. They wanted to purchase for their two biology classrooms. So if you approve this transfer, we post the budget transfer to make sure there's actual fund dollars in instructional equipment line of $15,000. For the next budget transfer before you.
Before you go on to, can we just do transfer at a time? People have questions? Do people have questions about this transfer? So this is going from instructional materials to actual equipment?
Correct.
I thought it was interesting when I read the description, that it was originally a textbook line item, but she's able to use, and the curriculum's changing next year, which is that runs a science class, and they're able to use free curriculum, and actually wanted to do it as quickly as possible. It was funny because it was timely.
Any other questions about this item? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So for the next transfer, this is from our facilities department, so Director Copax submitted this. And there is custodial task and frequency software that he is wishing to purchase. We are asking to remove funds from maintenance DPW salary line. And I want to note that because we typically aren't moving salary lines to fund equipment purchases or service purchases. But in this case, we have several positions that we budget for within our operating budget for use for town staffing. So it could be town maintenance. But in this case, the position that we don't, we do not need to fund or do not anticipate needing to fund this year is the town HVAC technician position. There is a posted position on the town website, but for where we're at in the year, as far as what we have budgeted, we don't anticipate needing to allocate the full amount of what we have for the salaries for DPW. There are several positions budgeted in that line, also including 50% of our town plumber and the 50%.
Electrician.
And 50, yes, and electrician, and 50% of the HVAC technician's salary. So using that cost savings, we're asking to allocate 25,000 of that for purchase of custodial software. And I believe that helps with looking at square footage and how many custodial staff are assigned to certain buildings.
So this, this savings is 50% of the cost that we, or the cost that we would pay, which is 50% of the salary for the town HVAC technician.
That's correct, yeah. And so this is a piece of that. And once we get into the next transfer, there's a remainder there too, that we also reallocating out to another page.
Any questions about this line item?
It goes to a DESI code called substitutes?
Yes, and so I wanted to bring that up. That's another cleanup item. The software license subscription itself, the DESI code should be tied to where we actually are spending the dollars. In this case, 4011 for our purposes is software license subscriptions. That ADA code meets system-wide, so there is a better fit DESI code to use in this expense line going forward. So that's another area that we'll clean up. There's lots of line items like that throughout the district that do not make sense for why something that's system-wide for software subscription would have a code in it tied to substitutes.
Jim?
Can I, just before you, I just want to touch on that when Andrea became our Director of Finance, the amount of codes that she had that had to be reallocated, you know, because of the change of DESI codes was immense. So that's why the cleanup is still happening. We're catching this up.
So the DESI codes changed when?
July of 2022, yes. I started in summer '22. Some of them have been cleaned up. But there is a way to basically have mapping set up. We're literally just matching up our DESI codes as are in the general ledger system compared to what DESI codes are prescribed to be, and then identifying all the changes that need to happen. I have done the exercise when I first started. I haven't gone back and regrouped, but it's cleanup that needs to take place because when we have to go to report out to DESI, I have to manually then see, well, what is this and what is it actually supposed to be tied to when reporting out to the state? It would make my life a lot easier.
Yeah, Jim?
So this, the 144,722, we are, we're just saying, so I'm clear, it's technically would be 50% of the town HVAC salary?
So that 144,000 consists of three different positions that were allocated. 50% of what the town's overall budget is for that, those three positions. And then so we're only, we work with the town when we budget to say, well, yes, we can afford half of X person's salary because of the work that they do within our buildings.
And so those positions are HVAC, plumber, and electrician?
Yes.
We do have a town electrician, like, we do have a town electrician and a town plumber. Are there three unfilled positions that we budgeted for them?
No, 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 I'm sorry. It's only one unfilled position, the HVAC position. The other two are filled. We do, we do pay that.
We still spend down that budget amount based off of the town allocating.
So we help pay for those.
Right, no, that makes sense, but the number, I guess I'm just saying what's left, okay. We're still, we're spending that down to pay the salaries of the town electrician and still, okay.
Yep, exactly. We still have wiggle room in that budget line to make sure we're still meeting that obligation for the other two positions.
And the software is just tracking tasks done by custodians and how frequently they do them in each building?
I don't know about the frequency. Yeah, it's to keep track for efficiency. So we have a new finance, excuse me, sorry, no, we don't. We have a new Director of Facilities and Operations. And he has experience with the software system where he can assign the tasks. And the custodians have checklists and they can keep track of what they're doing and he can keep track of what they're doing as well. And then he's reallocating staff across the district starting next year.
Any other questions for this item? Okay.
Okay, so the next transfer we have are repairs to the wastewater treatment plant, pump bearing and shaft. As you may know or may not know, we have a wastewater treatment plant facility here on our campus to service our school district. So Director Copax has also requested from that same DPW salary line, using the cost savings from the vacancy in the HVAC technician position, a little over $13,000 to be transferred to our sewage utility line for the repair to the wastewater treatment plant.
You said for repairs to the wastewater treatment plant? Do we pay for all repairs for that plant? Do we share it with the town?
I believe we're paying for the majority of the repairs. We do have a contract with a third-party, Weston and Sampson, for about $120,000 per year. They do have an allowance in that contract for repairs. We've already exceeded that allowance within repairs. I want to say that was anywhere between 10 and about $15,000.
Isn't this a new treatment plant?
I don't know the age of that.
No, it's definitely not new, but we did make improvements to it when we built Blanche Ames so that it had the capacity to absorb the building, but it's definitely not a new building.
Okay. Any questions about this? No, I was talking about, because I know, just through.
This is the one you see right at the edge of the parking lot.
During the Blanche Ames project, I remember talking about this a lot. So, all right, so it was just kind of making it.
Increasing the capacity to put such a huge school online.
So the schools are the only system in the town that uses this water plant, wastewater plant? Like the community, none, no other part of the community?
I don't think any of the houses behind it are in it, but we're the vast majority of it and we are responsible for it. We've tried not to be, but we still are.
Any other questions about this item? Nope, okay.
Okay, and then so our last adjustment before you tonight, we brought up several different contracts over a couple of different school committee meetings for Purple Lady and for ADA Transportation. So I'm bringing before you a transfer request for our McKinney-Vento student population. And this is to make sure we have enough funding from a budgetary perspective to finish out the 630, 2025 fiscal year. So in this particular adjustment, I know Assistant Superintendent Pruitt brought up that we did have some cost savings from our professional development line this year because we had grant funding opportunities. So we're requesting a transfer of $51,000 from that professional development line to the McKinney-Vento Transportation line to make sure that we can fund the contracts that came before you previously for the rest of the fiscal year.
Questions about this?
We voted, just if you remember, you have the documents from last time, we voted on a, did we vote on a different amount than 51,000 or is this just?
No, yes, you did vote on a different amount. So the ADA contract was for 100, I think, $26,000. And the Purple Lady was 40 and change.
That's what I'm thinking of, the Purple Lady one?
So, yeah, so both, between both of them, this will be enough to make sure we have the expenses covered throughout the remainder of the year.
That's what the number, I couldn't remember. That seemed close.
And you have one more?
No, that's it.
That's it? Okay. Okay, so we need to take a vote on the transfers. So I will make a motion to approve the budget transfers as described by Dr., not Dr., by Ms. Charzkevsky, which I can never say your name right. Do I have a second?
Second, Lumen.
All in favor? Okay. So we can go back up. You can come back. The next stuff will be quick, I promise.
There's nothing like seeing the steamer ride by. Sorry, it's like the Zamboni in the hallway. I happened to.
Okay, so the next item is distribution of revised town and school subcommittee chart. So we're not doing anything with this tonight. There's just been a lot of changes since the last time I handed it out. So I just wanted to make sure you had an updated copy. We're going to talk about this vote on this, not at the next meeting, but the following meeting. So that way, in between, if you have any questions about the committees, just let me know. And then we'll be ready to vote on them in meetings.
So we're doing this one at the end of June?
Yep, yep. Okay, explanation of superintendent review process and schedule. Let's see if I can still speak. All right, so one of our members is not here and two of our members have not been through the summative part of the evaluation before. And I know Lauren was just on for a couple of months when we did this last time. So what I thought I'd do is kind of go over with you the general process. And then over the next two meetings, we'll be actually doing the review. So the evaluation process is a two-year cycle. It's covering 2023 to 2025. The first presentation in this cycle was at the November 2nd, 2023 meeting. And at that meeting, Dr. Cabral presented and the school committee discussed her goals and key actions. At the mid-cycle point, the formative evaluation took place. This occurred at the August 9th, 2024 meeting, at which the school committee and Dr. Cabral discussed the progress she was making on her goals. We are now completing the evaluation cycle with the summative evaluation. At the next meeting, June 12th, Dr. Cabral will present her end-of-cycle summative evaluation point, a narrative and links to evidence that shows she's met her goals and the standards that were agreed upon at the beginning of the cycle. At that time, committee members can ask clarifying questions. Each member will be given an individual evaluation document to complete. The evaluation should provide objective feedback and be limited to the goals and the standards that were agreed upon at the beginning of the cycle and limited to the timeframe of the cycle. You cannot discuss with each other your individual evaluations while you're doing them. And when complete, you give them to me to compile. Based on the individual evaluations, I will complete a composite evaluation. Since the superintendent has only one evaluator, the committee as a whole, at the end of this process, there will be one rating for each goal and for each standard and for the overall summative rating. I will prepare the composite narrative, a summary of members' comments, and the composite rating based on the preponderance of the individual ratings. So you're going to get that at the next meeting, at June 12th. So I'm going to ask that you return your evaluations to me by June 20th, a week later, so that I can compile the composite evaluation prior to the meeting on June 6th, which is where we will discuss the evaluation and vote on it. You can always contact me or Dr. Cabral while you are working on your evaluation if you have any clarifying questions. While only the final composite evaluation will be discussed at the meeting, each individual evaluation will be public available. It's usually left in the central office. Since we have two former members who are on the committee for a large portion of the cycle, they will be allowed to prepare individual evaluations that cover the period up until they left the committee. And their evaluations will become part of the composite evaluations. I have spoken to Jen and Nancy and they intend to submit evaluations. For our two new members, Jim and Colleen, you prepare your individual evaluation based on your time on the committee and then you will both participate in the vote for the final evaluation. However, if you're not comfortable, you don't need to participate. We will discuss and vote on the composite evaluation at our meeting on the 26th. To help prepare you for this process, Lynn has included in your packets the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Model System for Evaluating Superintendents, an explanation guide for evaluating the superintendent from the Mass Association of School Committees. These two documents explain the evaluation cycle and the process for school committees to evaluate the superintendent. Also included in the packets will be parts from the earlier part of the evaluation process. So Dr. Cabral's goals and key actions that were provided and discussed at the school committee meeting of November 2nd, 2023, the minutes from the school committee meeting of November 2nd, 2023, the minutes from the discussion and vote on the superintendent's formative evaluation rating at the school committee meeting on August 9th, 2024. And I think she put in the packet too, the link for the June 22nd, 2023 meeting, at which the last summative evaluation was discussed, just so you could see how it was done. And what I forgot, and I'm asking Lynn, is if she can give everyone the link for the November 2nd, 2023 meeting, because that's where Dr. Cabral discussed her goals and those were the goals that are being used in the evaluation. So it would be helpful for you to see them. You have the minutes, but it'd be helpful for you to see the meeting.
Jackie?
Yeah?
Can I just say that I didn't make hard copies of those like they are on the electronic?
Okay, okay, great. And if you guys want hard copies, you know, you can just ask, we'll just make them for you. In the packet of the school committee meeting for the next one, June 12th, Dr. Cabral will provide the information we need to complete our evaluations. So please review those prior to our meeting so that if you have any questions about anything in the document, any of the links aren't working, you know, anything like that, you can just ask at the meeting. you can just ask at the meeting. And then again, as we go through this process, just ask whenever you want, as many times as you want. Because it's, there's a lot of information. So it's, there's a lot to go through. Any questions so far? Okay. Okay, since our last meeting, we have signed the following warrants. Andrea's not here anymore. We signed O66S. I don't know if the other ones went through or not.
I think it's been done.
Okay, so. Public comment? Anyone?
I don't see any public.
Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Just a few quick things. Just the seniors, as Marvel noted, last day is tomorrow. That's pretty exciting. The send-off, prom on the 5th, graduation on the 7th. Last day for all students is Monday, the 16th. It is a half-day for both students and staff, so, or teachers. And so parents should be mindful of that. The, we have finished teacher appreciation or educator, excuse me, educator appreciation week. But we obviously still appreciate our educators and Central Admin did such a good job of really drumming up a lot of donations that we have continued doing some drawings for the staff. So we've had some fun, silly videos that we're doing and sending to staff and providing some fun drawings for them and different surprises. So we're continuing that right through the end of the school year, take them to the summer. There are so many events going on right now. May is the month that we just, most of us just kind of sign off with our spouses and say, we'll see you sometime in June. Celebrations, banquets, concerts, awards, ceremonies. So there are a lot of things, especially for the new members coming online. Hopefully you can join us, but obviously they're, they're coming at you quickly. Just know the whole year isn't like this. It's usually just like the end of the year. And on June 5th, we will be celebrating all of our retirees. 33 we're up to right now, 33 total in the whole district. So we look forward to that as well.
Yeah, it's always a really nice event.
And we don't have a school committee right after this year.
Oh, I know.
For the first time.
Yeah, that's true. We usually have a school committee meeting right after if we're like run out. Yeah. Assistant superintendents?
So it, just to kind of piggyback off of the calendar discussion, a shout-out to Director Davidson and Ann Weintraub, our Director of Curriculum and E.L. Today, they led a meeting with all the principals and some of our administrative assistants and club leaders and our athletic director to come up with a calendar, a district calendar for next year. So it's actually viewable. You can see it on our
To try to avoid some of the conflicts.
Right, it's on our district calendar. I mean, yes, it's under the link. So you can see how we are really trying to not schedule things on the same day or same night. So all school committee meetings won't have events during those times as well. So everybody was very mindful. We were able to complete the meeting in an hour and 40 minutes, which Craig had shared in one of his previous districts. The meeting lasted three hours. So it was great. Everybody was really working together and working hard. But when you look at the May calendar, it's every single night. There's something with all the schools. It's really, really amazing. So if you're bored in May, don't worry. You'll have something to do here in the Eastern public schools. Lastly, I just want to share and remind everybody, STEAM Night for PK to 2, that everyone's welcome, is next Friday. We're really excited about all the tables and all the activities that keep coming in and
I love STEAM Night.
Yeah, so fun, so fun. So we will see you at 6:30 on
The 30th.
Next Friday.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, school committee
And that's on Blanchame, sorry, Blanchame.
School committee notes, we'll just go down the line. Kelly?
Just a couple of things. So for all of those educators who are retiring, I will not be able to attend. I will be out of the country for work. So I will miss having a moment to appreciate you all. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. There is so much amazing, so many amazing things going on. So I am very much appreciative. I won't touch on any of it. But congratulations to our seniors for their, their last day tomorrow. I just want to remind anyone who's actually watching, who's a kindergarten or pre-K parent, that they end early. They do not have the same last day of school. So they are done on June 10th. And I double-checked and I believe that that is actually a full day of school according to Parent Square, and I'm getting the nod. Okay, perfect. So for anybody like me who cares about childcare, for the kindergartners, the pre-K and kindergartners do have their normal days, but it is June 10th. It is a bit earlier. We don't meet again until the 12th. So by then, the high school will be in the middle of exams. So I do want to wish them good luck with all of their exams. I do love the change that many don't even know about, which is that the last day of school is not an exam day. They actually come back together for a half-day. It used to be an exam day. So I think that's awesome that the exams are done and then they get to come back and enjoy that last, that last time together. And for anyone who's watching, we did have our town meeting on Monday. And the town did vote to appropriate funds for the override budget should the override pass on June 10th. So I do want to take a moment to remind everyone that the vote is on June 10th. There is an option for early voting. Please use the town website to understand because it's a very limited option. But it is important to have your voice heard. We spent time today celebrating a number of educators who, some of whom made it very clear in their letters that they made a choice to leave a little bit earlier than they would have otherwise done. So because of the pressure that we are under as a district. So I encourage everyone to understand that, to also understand what's happening with the rest of our staff across town, the police and fire situation, the emergency personnel. It is important to understand that as we work through it and understand the implications. I understand that the tax changes are very hard for everyone, but it is really important that everyone take their time to get educated and understand what's happening with the district and be prepared to vote for June 10th.
Thank you. Lauren?
So I was going to mention STEAM Night. And I was going to mention about the town meeting and thanking everyone who showed up. It was a huge, huge showing. So if that many people and more, obviously, can come and vote on June 10th, however you choose to vote, as long as you are voting with facts is the most important. And senior events, I've been to a couple and I am still looking forward to going to some more. This is like my favorite time of year. Broadway Night is one of the most spectacular events. I mean, there's so many special events throughout the year, but Broadway Night is, we should be selling tickets to attend. It's, it's just amazing. God bless you. I am looking forward to going to the 5th grade cultural expo this week. I also went to the 5th grade concert last night. It was very good. They did a great job. There's a concert tonight. It's probably over for 7th and 8th grade. And that is all I have. I'm looking forward to the seniors' last day tomorrow. I wish them all good luck. It's going to be a happy, exciting day, but also sad.
Sure. We may have quickly said it, but May 7th, I believe, was School Nurse Day. I don't know if we fully recognized that on our last meeting. We might have said it quickly. I know this has been released by Dr. Cabral slash the district slash it's on Facebook, but Steve Cersei was honored as an amazing educator by DESI, which is pretty fantastic. My understanding is that there's a recognition at
Sorry, I had a frog in my throat.
Congratulations to the seniors that their last day is tomorrow. That's pretty amazing. Enjoy that. I feel like it's one of those few times in life where you maybe have almost nothing on your schedule for a little while.
Yeah.
Which becomes less and less frequent as you get older. So try to enjoy whatever time you have in that window. Monogram Night, I think there are a thousand things to do in the next month, like everyone said. I appreciate the invite to Monogram Award Night that I think we all got on June 2nd. Unable to attend, but very cool for the seniors, they're getting their varsity letters. I have one somewhere, my parents' attic.
For what sport?
Tractor field.
Awesome.
Yep. And my understanding is EMS Art Club finished a mural on belonging recently. So shout-out to the EMS Art Club and Kristen Kelly for completing that. Have not seen it, but I'm sure it's very cool. And lastly, sorry, National EMS Week is this week as well. So to the point about the larger town problems we're facing.
Yes.
We appreciate them.
Especially as they are spread thin right now because there's a lot of departures.
Oh, my God, you said, okay. I was thinking East Middle School.
Emergency Medical Service. Emergency Medical Services. Not, not national.
National, National East Middle School.
We reached that point of, you should have brought the combos with you.
Oh, God.
Thank you. So my colleagues have pretty much said everything. But I am looking forward to the senior events that I get to go to in the next couple of weeks. I can't wait for graduation. Jim, graduation is so much fun. I mean, about to walk for graduation, but being there and shaking their hands and seeing their bright shiny faces, so exciting.
And the hats, all the cats.
It's such a great event.
And was there graduation color?
Green and white.
Green and white.
I'm getting a whole new school committee wardrobe.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, so I am going to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Excellent.